Meeting for Tuesday, February 18th. Would you please rise and join us in a moment of silence? And the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Leonie.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to do what for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Tanna.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Carlat.
Here.
Councilmember Leonie.
Here.
Council Liaison Jelenek.
Here.
Council Liaison Pryor.
Here.
Thank you very much. This is your last chance to submit a speaker request form. They can be found in the lobby. Fill them out, give them to the city clerk, and we will call upon you at the appropriate time. The first item up is the presentation.
Mayor. Counsel, thank you. One of the things that the Peoria Fire Department has been recognized for recently is becoming a heart-safe city. And there's many criteria that's involved with becoming a heart-safe city, but some of the highlights that we like to accentuate are that our paramedics in the field and working in conjunction with our base hospitals are able to recognize myocardial infarctions in the field at a 95% success rate, which is pretty significant. We also are very, very well pleased with our teaching and certifying of over 1,200 citizens in Peoria and standard CPR and hands-only CCR, in addition to having an extensive AED program in the community. This allows us to partner with many organizations, including the local school districts, and our newest partner, which is the Anthony Bates Foundation. Sitting next to me, who will be giving a short presentation, is Sharon Bates. She's the founder, CEO of the Anthony Bates Foundation.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Let's see. I'd like to thank you because you make a difference in the children's lives.
Could you pull your microphone a little closer?
I'd like to thank you for making a difference in the children's lives. Just like the fire department and the city council and government, it does take a village not only to raise a child, but to save a life. The Anthony Bates Foundation got started in 2001. My son, Anthony, died of sudden cardiac arrest when he was 20 years old. He was a football player at Kansas State University when he died from undiagnosed hypertrophic cardiomyopathy. Unbeknownst to us, he had this condition. I didn't know that he had it, and nobody in our family had it. So I started a screening program because with EKGs and ultrasound tests, we can find out who potentially has this condition. And since his death, we have screened over 8,000 young people and find the average of 10% of the children that we screen have a condition, not just HCM, but we're finding all kinds of other things. And we've also added to our screening program training because just being prevention is not enough, but being prepared for a sudden cardiac arrest is another avenue of preparing the societies. Now, what is a sudden cardiac arrest? That's different than the heart attack or MRI. What did you call it?
MI.
MI. It's different. It's not the same to the heart. It's a supraventricular arrhythmia that happens in a heart that's diseased, that goes into a wild arrhythmia, and it needs a shock from an automatic external defibrillator. Now, we have been donating automatic external defibrillators to schools, but not enough schools have them. So that's why we partner with fire departments and we partner with the school districts to try and raise more awareness and get the screenings done, place the AEDs, and help prevent sudden cardiac arrest as well as protect from sudden cardiac arrest. Now, HCM is a leading killer of young athletes in our country. We lose about 7,000 to 14,000 youth every year to sudden cardiac arrest, and half of those are from HCM. So I'd like to be able to provide screenings and education and awareness as well as the importance of what we should do with hypertrophic cardiomyopathy in our society. Now, in our screening program, we do blood pressure checks, we do ultrasounds, which is looking at the structure of the heart, and EKGs. And the EKGs are looking at the electrical part of the heart. And then we also train the participants to go through the screening that also we help them understand what an automatic external defibrillator is and what hands-only CPR can do for them because you never know when the next sudden cardiac arrest will occur. And we give them a little bit more information about our testing. And we also, from that screening program, we've been providing a great service to the communities, and we continue to do that, but we only can do that with the partners that we have. And we're grateful for everybody that's involved. And of course, why do we do it in schools? Well, that doesn't really need to be said, other than the fact that that's where the kids are. And of course, the chain of survival, when you add the schools plus the AEDs, then you're prepared for a sudden cardiac arrest, and we're making a difference in the chain of survival by increasing the survivability of sudden cardiac arrest. We've been doing our screenings for quite a few years, and we've raised awareness, we've placed AEDs, and just recently, we had our first save in Tucson from an automatic external defibrillator. Tucson was prepared. They had trained people. They had automatic external defibrillators, one of which was donated by Anthony Bates Foundation. And we saved a 57-year-old man, who was the official on the field, for a tournament. So that was a great save for us. The AIA is taking credit for it, but that's okay. We saved him, too. It takes a village. It's not just one person. It's everybody involved. So I just want to acknowledge the fact that this young man is alive today from everyone that's doing their part. We've had other saves, too, and I'd like to show you a short little video about our save that we had in Anthem just recently. Well, I work at a school. I'm a teacher, and our PE teacher had sent out a blurb and an email to the entire staff that the Anthony Bates Foundation was coming to the school. And we all went through the screening, and it was painless, it was effortless, the people were lovely. And my husband was the last one off the table and came up to us and said, "By the way, yes, I just found out I have an aneurysm and a leaky valve, and I need to get to a cardiologist immediately." And I was just floored by that fact that it was him and not my son. And so we just, we thank the Bates Foundation tremendously because he wouldn't be here today without it.
No, and if I could add one piece to that, basically what happened was I was actually laying on the table in the echocardiogram. Tech basically started looking and immediately within two seconds said, "Oh, you have an aneurysm?" And it kind of took me back because, like she said, it was at the very end of all the screening. The three of them were waiting for me at the door, and I was like, "I have an aneurysm?" That's when they called over the cardiologist. Sadist on explained, said, "Get to a doctor immediately." "No, not really." And you know, that question's been asked by cardiologists that I've been going through since, and even people that know what happened to me. And I can't, I just attribute it to old age, you know, being winded during exercise, but I can't say that I did, I guess on hindsight, some of the things that I felt probably, I'm sure, would attribute to the aneurysm, but I would not have gone to the doctor for that life. Now, I mean, the foundation in going to this screening definitely saved my life. I went to a cardiologist, and quite honestly, when I walked into the office and told him why I was there, because he looked at me and said, "You look healthy while you're seeing me." Explained to him about going to the screening. He asked which foundation. I told him, he said, "Oh, okay, yeah." And he said, "But I gotta be honest with you." He said, "A lot of times when you go through the screenings," he said, "They may detect things that really aren't there, so I don't want you to panic." And I said, "Okay." It made me feel good at first, but there was something in the back of my mind that thought, "Yeah, I don't know about it." So he actually, they did the echocardiogram as well, and I could tell right away that when they looked, that the two of them, the tech and the cardiologist, looked at one another. Then he started listening closely to my heart. Absolutely not. No, I think what would have ended up happening, unfortunately, and we've talked about this, I am in stores, I've got a pretty active physical job. She probably would have gotten a call that I collapsed on the job and, you know, had a dissection from the aneurysm and probably died out in the field, is what I think. I'm just grateful that I am here and that we went to the screening that day.
I definitely, I don't take it for granted that I have a family that's here, and actually, I learned to value everything I have a lot more than I used to. And I understand that at any time, I could have had to be the man of the household. And yeah, it's just crazy to put your mind through that, thinking that you would have to step up. I'm only 15 years old, and knowing that my dad might not be here today without the foundation, it was shocking.
Wow, even more happened with the surgery and his father almost passing away at the same time of his exact surgery at the same hospital. Knowing Scott, he used to be a little bit nervous about his heart, I see a sense of ease in him now that he's had the screening. Somehow, I think he trusts that his diagnosis is correct, and he isn't going to drop on the football field. And we actually subsequently have been able to find out that it was asthma causing the problem all along, and he was actually having severe asthma attacks, and he didn't know it. He has sports-induced arthritis, so it's induced asthma.
I've got a history of heart problems in my family, and nothing, by the way, was ever detected. And that is one of the things that I mentioned, going back to the cardiologist. You know, I told him that I do have a couple cousins, male cousins, that were diagnosed with heart murmurs at a younger age. And when he was listening to my heart, he said, "You know, I could hear something there. No one's ever told you that in your entire life?" I said, "No, although there was a history." And then that kind of amazed him that it was found during the screening at the foundation. He's like, "Wow." And he just kept saying, in fact, he said to me over and over again, "You realize how lucky you are that you went there that day?" I said, "Yeah, I know." He goes, "Because you wouldn't be here, I'm telling you right now."
I know it was initially my reason that we ended up going, but the process was easy. It was simple, and it was so quick, and it saved my dad's life, and I'm so grateful for it, and I recommend everyone to do it.
Absolutely, I would highly recommend you do it. You know, a lot of times, I think I look at myself, like probably most men, 30s and 40s, kind of think we're indestructible. Oh, I don't need to go to the doctor. I am one of those guys. And I'm extremely grateful that the foundation was available and that my wife signed us up and had us go there because, like I said, there's no doubt in my mind that I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the foundation.
Our next screening is Saturday. We'll be at Peoria, or I'm sorry, we'll be at Liberty High School in Peoria, and we have 100 or more appointments still available. So if you'd like to get your heart checked, you young people, come on and get your heart checked. We're also partnering with the fire department to help us with training at the Peoria schools over the next year and a half. We hope to train all 10,000 of their students in the high school. And we'll be donating 32, to the elementary schools, we'll be donating 32 automatic external defibrillators. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's very impressive.
Do you have any questions?
Questions? Mr. Leonie?
I can relate to that, believe me. I was, is it okay by you, Speaker? Back in 1994, I'm a runner. I run marathons, I used to. 1994, I was running a 5K run in Sun City. I took third place, and I was supposed to go to Kansas City to represent Arizona. Well, I passed out. I had a heart attack, and I was dead for 20 seconds.
Wow.
So Southwest brought me back, and here I am today, thank God. And now, on February 25th, is that what I said? I have to go for procedure. After 20 years later now, to go for procedure, they find another blockage in there.
Wow.
So now I'm going back in for procedure on February 25th.
Bonus years.
So that's my experience. I could have made the same picture. But that's my experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda are all items that are listed with a C. They're considered to be routine, or they've been previously reviewed by the city council. They will be enacted by one motion unless a council member asks for one item to be removed. Do we have any requests? Ms. Rivera?
I would like to request to remove 12C.
12C? Any others? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Second.
The move is second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 12C. Please vote. The clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. 12C is a fund reallocation multicultural music festival.
Counsel, several months ago, when we went through the budget process, had approved $10,000 for a Cinco de Mayo event. And after consultation with citizens in the Acacia district and throughout the city, and in consultation with Mr. Irving Cutright, we brainstormed on how we could bring back or develop and create a new event in the city of Peoria and not be part of the Cinco de Mayo festivities. Every city in the valley has a Cinco de Mayo. Every bar in the valley has a Cinco de Mayo festivity. So in conversations and in meetings with Mr. Cutright and the Northwest Black History Committee, we brainstormed on Fiesta United, which would be a new event on April 12th, two weeks before Cinco de Mayo. And I believe it's going to be an amazing event. In working and in conversations with Mr. Cutright, he is in conversations with three national entertainers. This is going to be an event that's going to bring people from not only Peoria, not only the Acacia district, but throughout the valley. And because of the impact and the potential of this event, I believe that $10,000 won't be enough as a sponsor to give that boost to the Northwest Black History Committee to be able to put on this event. And this event will be the only African-American event of its kind taking place in the city of Peoria. And with that said, I would like to make an amendment on 12C to increase the amount from 10,000 to 20,000.
Okay, the motion has been made to increase the funds in the amount of additional 10,000, moving it from 10,000 to 20,000.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Questions, comments? Ms. Carlat?
Where is the additional funds? Where are they coming from? How is that being moved in the budget?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. The question in regard to the funding, the current funding is supported through the general fund in the amount of $10,000. We would anticipate that the general fund would be used in available reserves within that for this item. What would generally occur is as we develop the budget for the upcoming year, we look at the amount of one-time revenue that is above our reserve requirements, and that is applied in the upcoming budget. We would just anticipate that that $10,000 be applied for this event and adjust the budget accordingly going forward.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Could I have a motion? Oh, it's been, I'm sorry, it's been moved in second. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item is 18R, public carrying liquor licenses, various locations. This will be a new conveyance liquor license, Series 8, for Lake Pleasant Cruises, located at 8708 West Harbor Boulevard, Dock D1. A new restaurant liquor license, Series 12, for Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar at 8,001 West Bell Road. And the third one is a new restaurant liquor license, Series 12, for Applebee's, located at 9330 West Northern Avenue. Your staff report.
Yes, sir. Properties were posted in accordance with Arizona statutes. All reviewing departments recommend approval. All fees were paid, and no comments were received from the public.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone in the audience care to address any of these three liquor license applications? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Questions or comments from counsel? Could I have the motion?
Second.
Move by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. Ames. This is 18R, the liquor licenses for Lake Pleasant Cruises and two Applebee's. Please vote. The clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is 19R. We will deal with both 19 and 20R in terms of presentation and comments from the public and any questions or comments from the council. We will vote on each action separately. First one up is 19R, general plan amendment, land use map, Riverwalk, Pinnacle Peak Road and 77th Avenue. And 20R is a rezoning for Riverwalk, Pinnacle Peak Road, 75th and 77th Avenues.
Chris Hockes, our planning and community development director, will make the presentation on this after he fills his water glass.
Thank you, Carl. I'll probably be up here a while. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We have two items before you. Item 19R, this is a minor general plan amendment. This is for the southern 40 acres of what is a 68 and 1/2 acre development site. The southern 40 acres represent the area that the applicant is requesting to re-designate on our general plan. They're requesting to re-designate it from a state residential, 02 units per acre, to a low-density residential, 2 to 5 units per acre. And then item 20R, a companion item, is a rezone. It's a request to amend the current zoning on the site from R135 or 35,000 square foot lots to a single-family PAD that would provide for a mix of lot sizes that I'll describe in a second. And this would facilitate a residential development of up to 122 detached single-family residential lots. In terms of area context, as I mentioned, the rezone is the entire 68 and 1/2 acres. However, the minor general plan amendment that we're considering is the area that's represented in blue. Really, it's the portion of the development site that's located south of Pinnacle Peak Road. So contextually, the New River is located to the east. The city of Glendale is also across New River to the east, and it's the area south of Pinnacle Peak Road. There's a couple existing developments there, Wind in Place, Patrick Ranch, and others. Working our way east to south and around, to the south is currently vacant, but we do, I will note that we do have a zoning case that's currently pending review called Hidden Paradise Estates. South of that development is existing Fletcher Heights and Deer Valley Estates. Located to the west, if you can identify the brown, those are unincorporated Maricopa County islands. And then areas at Pinnacle Peak and 83rd, that's a signalized intersection. Pinnacle Peak Road would provide the principal access to the development. The developments around 83rd and Pinnacle Peak are predominantly 18,000 square foot lots and larger. Some of those developments are Clearview Estates, Pinnacle Peak, I'm sorry, Pinnacle Ranch, and Casa de Sunrise. And then to the north are a mix of vacant lots and some lots that are developed as one-acre lots. In terms of the access, again, I mentioned that the site would be accessed principally from Pinnacle Peak Road. Pinnacle Peak Road is designated as a collector on our general plan. The Pinnacle Peak Road is somewhat improved near 83rd Avenue, and then it, once you get east of 79th Avenue, the condition of that roadway necks down to a smaller pavement surface. On our general plan, I'll note that we do indicate Pinnacle Peak extending east across New River over to the eastern side. However, when you look at Glendale's general plan, they have a different general plan configuration. They don't indicate Pinnacle Peak as a collector, nor do they show Pinnacle Peak extending across New River. So as we consider the rezone, we certainly have made conditions and circumstances in place to preserve the right-of-way along Pinnacle Peak for a potential future condition of Pinnacle Peak crossing New River. But just to note, right now, it does not, it's not in the city's tenure CIP. A bridge construction's expensive, and certainly with the coordination and agreements that would be included with the city of Glendale, that's more of a longer-term play, and it's certainly not within the current planning horizon that this case is. These graphics illustrate the existing general plan land use and the zoning map. On my left is the general plan land use. Again, as you see, the area in orange, that's the portion of the site that the applicant is asking to re-designate to 2 to 5 units per acre. Most of the area is shown in light brown is a state residential, 02 units per acre. That's generally larger lots, and typically, we would estimate those to be 18,000 square feet and above is typically what those represent. The city of Glendale, again, to the east, those are some smaller lot sizes, and they range anywhere from 12,000 square foot directly east of the river corridor to some smaller, some around 8,000 and 10,000, but a mix of lot sizes there. Fletcher Heights is 2 to 5 units per acre, and that would represent a similar density and character that the applicant is proposing for the area south of Pinnacle Peak Road. Now, looking at the zoning map on the right, again, it's a mix of lot sizes and zoning. I think the one thing that is very uniform is the Maricopa County Islands, unincorporated island that's shown in, I guess, brown on the graphic. That is zone Rural 43 in the county. Rural 43 is a one-acre lot zoning designation. I mentioned a few of the developments along 83rd and Pinnacle Peak. As you enter the site, those are all zone R118, 18,000 square feet or roughly half-acre lots. The zoning districts to the, I guess, to the south and west and north are an assemblage of R135, 35,000 square feet, General Agricultural, AG, and then there's a few, SR43, Suburban Ranch, 43 signifying one-acre lots. South of the site, I guess I should say, south of Williams Road where Fletcher Heights is located, Fletcher Heights is a planned area development, meaning it's a larger master plan. They have a mix of lot sizes. The areas of Fletcher Heights that are closest to the project have lot sizes ranging from 5,000 and 7,000 square feet. And then a couple of the communities to the west of Fletcher Heights are zoned 10,000 square foot lots and 12,000 square foot lots. So we've got a mix of lot sizes in the general area. This graphic illustrates the conceptual development plan that is before us. And again, even though we're considering tonight a 68 and 1/2 acre rezone, I will note that the total development plan is for 80 acres. And so if you look at the top left-hand corner where it says six lots, the developer would develop those six lots under the R135, 35,000 square foot minimum lot size. It is not part of this rezone case, though. So again, the development plan, up to 122 detached single-family homes, and as I mentioned, a mix of lot sizes. So if we look at the graphic, and let's start north of Pinnacle Peak where you see the A, all those lots would be a minimum of 18,000 square feet in size. So we're working our way down where you see B, those would be a minimum of 10,000 square foot lots. And then the smallest lots would be internalized, they'd be located near the river corridor. In the area shown as C, those would be 8,000 square foot lot sizes. When you consider the overall gross density of the project, because we do utilize a gross density, it's 1.78 units per acre overall. But if you break up the north and the south parts of the development, those parts that are north of Pinnacle Peak would generate a 0.59 units per acre, and the area south of Pinnacle Peak, 2.6 units per acre. So a couple of the plan items to note, this is a gated development. The axis, again, would occur at Pinnacle Peak. Pinnacle Peak, then, you could enter the 18,000 square foot lot to the north, or the developments to the south. There's also another access point along 77th Avenue. So because the two entry points at 77th Avenue and Pinnacle Peak are considered a single point of entry, given the distance and separation, this does not constitute, it only constitutes one point of access. Therefore, as part of this plat, the developer would be conditioned to provide an automatic sprinkler system for all the lots. Now, this situation would be mitigated in the future as additional development occurs, so it would be more than one point of access. But for the time, it would be conditioned to automatic sprinkler system. Terms of the open space requirements, the total open space that we see is 16.9 acres. We break that up into usable, or what we call programmed or active open space, that's about six acres, and then the natural open space, about 10 acres. Included with that open space are some internalized trail corridors, along with a regional trail system that we would have along the New River corridor. So we would have the developer dedicate a 30-foot trail easement, and they would be required to construct a 10-foot concrete trail as part of this development project. The development would also be required to provide half-street improvements along 77th Avenue, the entire extent of the development. Avenue, the entire extent of the development, and that would include, of course, curb, gutter, sidewalk, landscaping, and streetlights. Pinnacle Peak would need to be improved with a dry weather crossing, and Rock Springs Wash is located a little bit to the west of the development, so as part of the off-site conditions that they would have to mitigate would be to provide an off, rather, a dry crossing, and all-weather sovers over Rock Springs Wash as part of the site improvements. In terms of the Pinnacle Peak, that portion that's located east of where you enter the site, again, that would be reserved as a tract as part of the development. The plat language would basically state that at a point in time, if Pinnacle Peak should extend east across the river corridor, that would need to be dedicated to the city at no cost. But at the point being, it would be improved with decomposed granite, there would be no landscaping, so that if, in the future, if it was to be a roadway, we would not have to rip out landscaping material. But it would be part of the notification required to potential home buyers in this project. This graphic just illustrates some character elements. The graphic on the left just illustrates some of the wall concepts that are proposed. The graphic on the other side illustrates the landscaped median along Pinnacle Peak as you enter the project, and then the gated portions of the project on either side of Pinnacle Peak, a landscaped median entering both sides. As you know, all rezone activities and general plan amendments, we do require notification. We provide notice of notification, which is called notice of application, as soon as the project comes in, we provide that, and also notice of hearing. Based on the size of the development, this was provided to all property owners within a quarter-mile radius, including all registered HOAs within a one-mile radius. There were two neighborhood meetings that were held. The first one was held May eighth, two thousand and twelve, or almost two years ago, at Frontier Elementary School. There were, there were seven attendees at that meeting, and then there was a follow-up meeting held about a year later, same place, and there were nineteen attendees at that meeting. Some of the concerns that we heard from the meeting was Pinnacle Peak, there were questions about who would maintain Pinnacle Peak and whether would cross the New River. Some expressed an interest in having Pinnacle Peak cross, and others said absolutely not, we don't want the additional traffic to go in those areas east of the New River corridor. There was also some questions about what would be the height limit of the homes, and just to talk about that for a second, when we consider all the zoning categories that I showed you, whether it's one-acre lots or SR forty-three, we currently have a standard that says that single-family homes can go up to thirty feet or two stories. There was also concern about what would be the impact of this project on traffic conditions in the local area, principally Pinnacle Peak Road. Pinnacle Peak, of course, is a collector, and although four lots do front on Pinnacle Peak, there was concern about what this would do to general traffic conditions in the area. Of course, we do require a traffic impact analysis to be prepared by a registered professional engineer. It is also reviewed by our traffic engineering group, and the recommendations were accepted. Some of the findings that they came up with was that the project was estimated to generate about one thousand three hundred and five ADTs or average daily trips. The study intersections were forecasted to operate at acceptable levels of service during the opening and future-year conditions. So what this means is that no significant impacts were identified, and there were not any mitigation measures, with the exception of a stop sign that would be required at Seventy-seventh and Pinnacle Peak as you enter the development. And then finally, some concerns that were heard at those meetings were basically the lot size. There was a desire by some to maintain a one-acre or a semi-rural character in the area.
I'm going to interrupt you right here for just a second. Go ahead, Mr. Edwards. He has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, can you explain, give me a little more insight on the traffic study that was done at Pinnacle Peak? When it was done, what it, what I'm concerned about is with the potential additional homes along with the new Great Heart School that's on the corner of Pinnacle Peak and Eighty-Third, was the traffic study conducted when the school was being constructed, or was it several years before? Because what I'm concerned about is now that that area has a lot of traffic potential, and I want to make sure that the study recognized the fact that that school was going into place.
Mayor and council, Councilmember Edwards, the study was prepared by a RIC engineering group. The date on that study was September seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen. So in that study, they studied several key intersections in the area, and they looked at a pre-development condition and then a post-development condition, so basically after build-out of it.
So, okay, so as part of that study, what was their, they said that the traffic would be acceptable, that the road would be able to handle that amount of traffic?
Correct. What they do is they look at, and I'll try not to jump out of my area of expertise a little bit, but what they do is they look at the intersections, and there's a rating on the intersections, and they go from A to F, just like our school grades, A being the best level of service, F the worst. And so they gave a rating to those intersections, and then they looked at the trips that would be generated and where those trips would be, would go, and what would be the impact on those intersections. They looked, again, at a pre-development condition and then a post-development condition, and so the intersection levels of service did not change in that staff report. In other words, they were, they were the same levels of service that we provided after build-out as what they, what's seen today.
So let's go into, after, during build-out, are we saying that it's going to be one lane in and one lane out on Pinnacle, or is it going to be two lanes in and two lanes out?
It would be, the traffic report did not recommend any off-site improvements were warranted based on the traffic generation. So remember, I mentioned that east of Seventy-Ninth, it does neck down, so you do have one travel lane in either direction on that side.
I'm concerned that we had to, you know, I know that the city took the measures of having to put some parking restrictions on Pinnacle recently because of the additional traffic on Pinnacle due to the parking of the parents onboarding and offboarding students. And I know since that has taken place, you know, they're not parking there anymore, but there's still the traffic, the additional traffic, and I just want to make sure that, you know, if this goes through, that the roads are sufficient enough to carry the traffic in and out. I don't want to have, you know, a single road backed up, it takes twenty minutes to get on to, up and down Eighty-Third Avenue.
Thank you. I understand.
Thank you.
The applicant did follow up with additional notification now to the neighborhood with an updated plan. They also spoke with sixteen area properties. They had a series of meetings, some within the homes of those neighboring property owners. In terms of city input, the city received, we, you know, through the course of this project over the last two years, we've received several calls and inquiries. We did receive two petitions and support that are in your packet, received in April two thousand and twelve. We also received two letters of opposition, received March and April of last year. Some of the neighborhood compatibility, I'll call it, some of the items that changed as the, as the plan went through the process. The, again, the zoning area moved back to retain a R-135, thirty-five thousand square foot buffer, so all those lots would be constructed at the existing zoning category. There was, again, a transitional lot sizes, eighteen thousand square feet and above would be north of Pinnacle Peak, and that would increase south of Pinnacle Peak, but the most, smallest lot sizes would be internalized, located on the eastern portion of the southeastern portion of the site, rather, along the New River corridor. There was also an overall reduction in lots to the current one hundred and twenty-two that are before you. This item went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That meeting was held December five, two thousand and thirteen. There were no members of the public that spoke in support or opposition to, to beat both those cases, and at that meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval. Some of the key staff findings that I'll talk about. We believe that the changes introduce a land use category that provides an orderly transition scale and intensity to existing development within the project vicinity. We believe that the development will result in a, in transitional land use, I should say, between the more densely developed areas to the south and the more semi-rural large-lot developments to the, to the north. We believe it also provides for a high-quality master plan with a mix of housing options, lifestyle choices, and this is all within one, one quality master plan development. And I think that's, that's pretty unique. You don't typically see a plan that has several lot sizes within that one, that one development. Also, we believe that it advances sustainability objectives in our general plan and provides for an efficient urban forum, so.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you again, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris? Thank you, Mayor. A couple of other questions. I talked to a lot of residents, getting a lot of phone calls. Can you explain to me what the East Pinnacle Peak Corridor Plan is? I've been able to read it, but again, it's, from what I understand, it was a proposal back in nineteen ninety-seven, but a lot of the residents that are coming back to me are referring to that, that particular proposal. And I'd just like to get a perspective from you as to what that entailed, and then I have a couple of follow-up questions.
Certainly. Mayor and council, Councilmember Edwards, the East Pinnacle Peak Corridor Plan, that even predates me here. So this was a, an effort in nineteen ninety-seven. The council directed the planning staff to form an advisory committee and prepare a specific area plan for the area, about a two-and-a-half square mile area, generally bounded by Sixty-seventh to the east, Eighty-Third to the west, Happy Valley to the north, and I believe Williams Road to the south. And the, and the purpose of the plan was to explore feelings and attitudes on development in the area and to prepare a specific area plan. So what's a specific area plan? Basically, as we, as we look at it, it's a refined level of the general plan, but it is part of the general plan. Now, that plan, you know, the record's a little unclear, but what is clear is that that plan did not move forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission or the city council for adoption.
Was there a particular reason why it didn't? And I'm not asking you to go back to your records, but to your recollection, what was the reasoning that it didn't go forward?
Yeah, my recollection is, what I believe to be the case is, so that was in nineteen ninety-seven. What happened in nineteen ninety-eight was the state, Arizona State, adopted the Growing Smarter Act, and that was a brand-new act for the state, and what that said was that all cities shall prepare a new general plan and has to contain a number of elements, and included in that would be that you have to take your general plan to vote. So I suspect what occurred at that point was that the staff, knowing that that was coming, that they would have to expend a considerable effort to bring that, you know, to do a new general plan, bring it to vote, that they held off on the East Pinnacle Peak Corridor Plan. So while it was not adopted, well, what I will say is this, is that I believe that effort informed the general plan update that occurred. One of the things that, that East Pinnacle Peak effort did was they identified five options. And while there's not a preferred option in the record that's indicated, it seems to indicate that generally the ranges of land use that you see in today's general plan are generally represented in that East Pinnacle Peak plan.
So as far as you're concerned, though, the corridor plan basically was scrapped, and standing today, is it, what's your thought on, you know, looking at it going forward? Is that something we need to look at, or?
Councilmember Edwards, my feeling is that plan and effort informed the general plan, and its findings were in some form integrated into that general plan effort. So while the East Pinnacle Peak Plan was not adopted by council, and certainly today we don't recognize it to have any, any legal standing, we believe it did inform the general plan effort that move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Ames? Yes, in terms of that Pinnacle Peak land, you just said your recollection of it, that it fits the rezoning that we're looking at here now, is that, or, or what was, what we have in place right now?
Vice Mayor Ames, there were five options, and so without getting too much in the weeds, I'll explain this, in that there were different plan concepts for that area. And back then, we had, we had a different density rating than we have today. So they don't line up perfectly that we have today, but generally, when you look at most of the options and some of the elements that were, seem to be uniform, it does match up fairly well with what you see today, today's general plan, in terms of the land use designation.
Okay, and in terms of today's Riverwalk?
Well, remember what I, what I mentioned was that Riverwalk, the area north of Pinnacle Peak Road, their plan, they are not requesting a change of the general plan. That portion of the development plan does comply with the general plan. What they are requesting is a change to the southern forty acres of the development.
Right, I understand, yeah. Okay, and that's a little different than envisioned maybe in ninety-seven, right?
Correct. That's right, sir.
Thank you.
And just to, just to finish off, again, two recommendations in front of you. One is the minor general plan, to re-designate the forty acres south of Pinnacle Peak to two to five units per acre, and then also a rezoning to approve sixty-eight and a half acres from single-family R-135 to a single-family PAD, and that's subject to conditions one through twenty-seven. So I've got an asterisk by twenty-seven because that was a late condition that was proposed from our city attorney's office and the applicant. It has to do with, with off-site imminent domain rights, and it's basically explained in our city, in our existing city policy, but they have to do some off-site improvements, and should they be unsuccessful in acquiring right-of-way, we have a policy within our, within our code, and so this just points that policy. And so we did pass out that new stipulation, but that's what number twenty-seven is. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to open the public hearing. It's going to be a public hearing on both nineteen R and twenty R. I've got several submissions to speak. If you haven't submitted a request to speak, does anyone care to address either one of these, either nineteen or twenty R? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. First speaker is Steve Campbell.
Mayor and council members, my name is Steve Campbell. I live at seven seven five seven West Avenue del Sol in Peoria, Arizona. A big part of my, my talk today was regarding the East Pinnacle Peak Corridor, Councilmember Edwards, so thanks for bringing that up, and it saves me a little bit of time. However, I think it is extremely important to, to realize that although that plan was not adopted, the general plan was changed at that time in approximately the year two thousand, from what it was a zero to, or a one point five to a four units per acre, it changed as a result of that study to the, to today's residential estate development of zero to two with a target of one. My biggest argument today is not so much the zoning, it's a, it's a general plan amendment. You know, this study, we spent a lot of time during this study at that time, and there's a lot of reason it was designated as that, because that's what the area dictated at that time, and still is today. There's nothing in that area that has changed to warrant a three units per acre in the middle, virtually in the middle of, of this whole residential estate development. Everything is R-118, as you can see on the map. There's several developers that have, have come in recently, and Shea Homes being one of them, Cabal Estadio, thirty-five thousand square foot lots, Silver Canyon, one-acre lots, they're selling homes in there and they're building them. They respected this, this zoning designation in the general plan. Taylor Morrison over in Happy Valley Estates, one-acre lots. A new applicant on twenty-six acres on Happy Valley and Eighty-first Avenue, they, that's zoned ag currently, they're going for an R-118. They respect this general plan. The citizens of that neighborhood have purchased property in that area over the years. They've looked at this general plan, which is a tool that we use and developers use, and I use, when before I have a property, to look at the area and say, wait a minute, this general plan doesn't allow it. It's, there's a pretty wide variety of zoning in this GPA, and it goes from an R-118 to an R-43 or bigger, you could actually go bigger than that, but you couldn't go less than R-118. The applicant has stated a couple of times in his application, which I won't bore you with all that, you've got it, several times, that he's trying to provide diversification within that zoning district. There's plenty of diversification, that you can go from an R-118 to an R-35 to an R-43. Part of the approval for a general plan amendment, which is what this is, this isn't just a simple rezoning case, and I think a lot of us have overlooked that. The general plan is a tool, it's a seriously studied, surveyed, many, many committees and city council members, planning and zoning, looking this to determine where, what fits in this area. There's plenty of other smaller lot opportunities for this developer. We've got, you know, Camino Largo coming down the road, Trailside was just approved with three hundred and sixteen lots. Tierra del Estadio, I mean, I think I counted a thousand vacant lots in there. Rock Springs, north of Jomax, all within a couple miles of this little area, this little alcove, what we have, there is certainly, I've counted over a thousand lots right now today that are either approved, developed, with homes going in on them, within a couple miles of this area, and that's not even considering what's coming down the pike. There's certainly no shortage of smaller lots. I spend a minute on, on the road, actually, you know, and that, that's a pretty good point, and I'm, Councilmember, thanks for bringing up the, the school, because I did have a couple of people that I talked to today that brought that up, that live and drive down Pinnacle Peak. That's, that's a nightmare right now. I mean, there are literally cars parked down Pinnacle Peak in, in a private roadway, they're parking up in, in another R-118 subdivision just north, they're in that neighborhood. When they have events at that school, it's a nightmare. I just hope they use, they use a different traffic study method on this project than they do with the other one. But we're talking over a thousand cars a day compared to what should be based on the existing zoning today. I, Chris, help me out on that. It doesn't allow more than forty lots on that right today. It doesn't allow more than 40 lots on that right today, times nine, maybe a couple hundred more trips instead of 1,000. By approving this amendment, what that does is open up the door, and you know it as well as I do, to the property to the south, which by the way, is zoned R-35. And just because that's in for an application for a general plan amendment also, does not mean that that's an open door for this one. That's not zoned. We need to look at that under its existing zoning of an R-35. That's no different than me saying, I'm going to medical school, so therefore give me my license now. I don't have it. They don't have that zoning, and they're going to have a fight getting it. But by approving this, it certainly makes it easier for them and gives them an argument. Same with the property to the west. And I've heard several people tell me that that owner has been offered to buy that if they get the zoning on this, and therefore they're going to try to get the zoning and the general plan amendment on that piece next door. So instead of talking 122 lots, we're talking 800 lots total. And then the traffic. And we've only got, we do not, cannot get across Pinnacle Peak. Don't forget that. So now, and I don't know if they'd require it at that point, but that makes no difference. We don't want it. Let's stop it now.
Mr. Campbell, I'm going to ask you to conclude your remarks.
I figured you were mayor. I'll wrap up. In closing, I'll just go right to my closing. I hope I've provided enough arguments to show that this applicant should not be denied. I'm, should be denied, sorry. It does not meet any of the requirements for the general plan use amendment. In fact, it appears that the only reason to approve the application would be one that the rationale for approving a land use amendment expressly says it cannot be a reason to approve, and that is for the good or benefit of a particular landowner or owners at a particular point. In other words, a GPA cannot be approved for the sole purpose of benefiting one landowner. That's what this appears to do. It doesn't benefit the city. It doesn't benefit the citizens. The citizens don't want it. I'm sorry. All other benefits that the applicant has provided for his application can and would be required under the, if the develop, if the land was developed under its existing land use, which is either an R-118, R-35, or an R-43. Currently, it's zoned R-43. There was a plat on this, and I think it was 2004, don't hold me to that, but several years ago. In addition to that, this property also did have a referendum on it done back in 2003, I believe, and it was defeated. And it came back again. So several of the developers and the city councils have honored the general plan, land use designation in that area. The citizens of this area do not support this. This would not be a benefit to the area or Peoria as a whole. No one here is attempting to keep the applicant from developing the property. Likewise, the applicant or the city should not attempt to adversely change the area and lifestyle of those who live in the area and purchase their homes with a reasonable assurance that it would remain as the general plan use designation indicated. This is what a general plan is for and should be respected as that. The applicant should have looked at the plan, looked at surrounding development and the area determined at the time, and we wouldn't be arguing what we are today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is, oh boy, I'm going to miss this one, Joseph Giangala?
Giangala.
Oh, that was close.
Thank you, mayor and council. I also, I live at 8066 West Expedition Way. My house actually backs up to Pinnacle Peak, just to the west of the proposed development. And I strongly oppose it. The same thing when I moved out there, looking around, Riverwalk was established as 35,000 square foot, R-35 lots with one acres and 35,000 square foot lots just to the south of Pinnacle Peak, which I thought would be just fine because it wouldn't impose that much traffic. But as Mr. Edwards, Councilman Edwards, brought up, once the school came in, I mean, I don't know how the traffic study could say we could handle another 1,300 trips per day on a two-lane road, because when the school's there in the morning, there are children walking across the street. Steve did bring up, people are parking in the other HOA where you guys had put signs up on this side of the street. Now they're parking across the street. People are walking across the streets. I don't know how we'd handle another 1,000 trips a day on a two-lane road. And it does cross the bridge. Once you get down there, there's only one entrance in, and then they can come back out, but they can't, they can't go out to the south because the road goes nowhere. It doesn't make them go Patrick and go west. It has to come back, all back to Pinnacle Peak. So they, all our entrance and exits will be on Pinnacle Peak and 79th. And if anyone's driven down there, you'd know that an extra 100 homes at 1,000 trips a day there. I don't know how it doesn't impact the extra traffic. And he never did say if, was it an A, B, C, or D, or E when they finished the study? What was it before the study? The houses, and then what is it now? I mean, may not have impacted it, but it had to move the number up, I'd imagine. So I definitely oppose it. I would like to see it kept as it was, Riverwalk at 35,000 square foot lots, or R-35, which had one acres and 35,000 square foot lots. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Wendy Davy.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Wendy Davy. I'm the director of research and planning with the Peoria Unified School District, and I am also a resident of the Peoria City. Our school district works with planners wherever they are developing within our school boundaries. Our purpose of working with developers is to ensure the communication that we're able to meet the needs of all our future and current students. I had the opportunity to review this file because our planner normally would be here, but our planner has moved on to greener pastures and great opportunities. And our new planner started today, and I was not going to do that to him. So I reviewed the file, and I spoke with our CFO and looked at all the data. And from what I can tell is Melkor worked with Peoria, and they did come to an agreement that was approved by our school board last spring. And it is in the context of that cooperation with Melkor that we stand in support of the development at this time. Question?
Thank you. Ed Bull.
Thank you, mayor and council. Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. I'm representing Melkor, and I want to begin by applauding staff for their thorough analysis. We agree with that analysis on this site-specific basis, and we agree with their findings. We also certainly appreciate staff's and the planning commission's recommendations for approval. This has been a long, detailed process on a site with a variety of challenges along the way, and it's a site where Melkor and various members of their team listened to staff and worked with staff, and listened to neighbors, and made changes in response to neighbor concerns to the extent that we could make those changes. As was indicated, at the end of the day, we are requesting your approval in accordance with staff's and the commission's recommendations for approval. On the rezoning case, we certainly accept all 27 stipulations. And as was noted before, under this PAD, we have a high-quality gated diverse master plan, which provides a variety of single-family alternatives for people who choose to live in Peoria, who choose to live in this part of Peoria, but who choose to not live on an acre or three-quarter acre lot. This particular development, as designed, has a great deal of open space. In fact, it's about 25% of the site is in open space. And while under the zoning case, we talk about having four different lot sizes, as was indicated under the preliminary plat, well, we have three under the zoning case, we have four lot sizes under the preliminary plat. In order to get there, as you know, we need to process the general plan amendment only south of Pinnacle Peak. North of Pinnacle Peak, we don't need to process a general plan amendment. And to boot, we are honoring your desert preservation requirements for north of Pinnacle Peak. As you can kind of tell on this aerial that's on your screen, everything that's under the colored lot configuration was mass-grated. In addition to north of the 18,000 square foot lots on the east side of 77th Avenue was also mass-grated. That development failed. I suppose there's a variety of reasons why it may have failed, but it failed. Our client acquired the property, worked with the city staff to try to figure out what we could do on this site, which some people have described as being moonscape, and repeating the development that was underway by being mass-grated was not the right answer from my perspect, our perspective, and I don't believe was the right answer from city staff's perspective. We got to work. We figured out a number of engineering issues, including extending 77th to the south, how to not extend Pinnacle Peak to the east, how to do various transitions and buffers and so on, on this site, which was explained, transitions from the south to the north, and transitions from the west to the east. Our closest neighbors to the east are on the other side of New River. I believe they're about 225 feet or so away, separated by New River, the trail, and open space. We transition into lot sizes that, while they are 8,000 square foot lots minimum, the lot sizes that are on there per one of the exhibits that, I don't know if, I don't know if our, is our PowerPoint live? Eventually, we're going to get to an exhibit that looks like this, that shows it in the area that has 8,000 square foot minimum. They go from eight up to about 3,500. The area which is 10,000 square foot lots. Whoop. Okay. How do I back up? That's the exhibit that looks like that. That's bad. That's, that's, there we go. So within the zoning case, we have the three different lot sizes. In addition to that, we have the fourth lot size, which is under the blue patch. And on this exhibit, it could be rotated so that the blue is north. In other words, it's laying on its side. But again, we not only have the three lot sizes within the zoning case, but there's a variety of lot sizes within each of those patches on the patchwork quilt. As was discussed, we're gated. We have centralized open space. We have buffer open space. We have the regional trail system. And we have all those things located in areas that, per discussions with staff, made good sense and continue to make sense as this plan continued to evolve through the processes. As a part of the analysis that goes into a general plan or went into the previously proposed Pinnacle Peak corridor study, those are more citywide in nature or more regional in nature, and irrespective of whether that Pinnacle Peak plan ever would have been adopted under whatever was being discussed at that time. It wasn't adopted, but some concepts were rolled into the general plan on a general basis. There's been a lot of changes that have occurred since 1997, first one of which, the site went through development processes when mass-grated, and it didn't work. But in addition to that, there's been other development in the area. We know that from Fletcher Heights, working north, we're a transition site and a graduation of densities appropriate. We know that from the Glendale side of the river, working west, there's various lot sizes, some of which have occurred since then. And again, transition and buffers are appropriate. We have listened and worked with not only planning but engineering staff on a variety of engineering and traffic and other kinds of issues. All the associated studies which led up to staff making the findings they were making and coming up with the 27 stipulations, 26 of which were recommended by the planning commission, are based upon various reports and analysis that was approved, reviewed and approved by the various technical folks on city staff, including the traffic study.
Excuse me, as I do with Mr. Campbell, I'm going to ask you to conclude your remarks.
Okay, all right. Switching quickly to school-related traffic and parking. And again, I'll come back to land use and lot sizes and layout if you want. But we have done, on this site-specific analysis, everything or everything and more that the staff has asked us to do. Going further with respect to school-related traffic and parking, which obviously we don't generate, but Jim Shelley, who's here with me from Melkor, has had discussions with staff about, I don't know if staff knows what the solutions are. We don't claim to know what the solutions are, but to the extent we can help, we will. We don't know what that means down at that particular intersection. We do know that our traffic study says that there's acceptable levels of service there with our development in place. We know we make various traffic-related improvements for the betterment of the area, for not only this site, but for other sites as well. With that, again, I will give more detail if you want, or in response to questions if you want. I'll circle back to where I started. Your staff looked thoroughly under every rock and bush on planning, engineering, traffic, and other issues along the way. We listened to neighbors. We made changes we can make. It's a good, integrated plan that brings diversity and development reality to the site, which has been scraped and needs to get back underway. We appreciate the recommendations. We request your approval in accordance with those recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, questions or comments on 19 or 20R? Yeah, I should be counsel. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, mayor. You had mentioned something in your last statement about improvements on Pinnacle Peak and working with staff. Can you enlighten me as to what those conversations entailed? Or Chris, maybe you can enlighten me as to what, because that seems to be my one sticking point, is the traffic in and out of that area.
Councilman Edwards, I'm going to defer to the applicant. Other than what's identified in the stipulations or the traffic study, there aren't any other off-site, with the exception of the dry crossing that would be, need to be done for Rock Springs Wash, there aren't any other off-site traffic conditions that are identified?
So I guess I'll point to you and ask you the question, what do you mean by assisting in off-site development or planning pasture, past your project on Pinnacle?
Well, Chris touched on it, and today, people who live out in this area, east of the Wash, do not have a dry crossing way in and out. And that's one of the requirements that we have. In fact, it's stipulation 18, and it's stipulation 19 that gives us a requirement to do things through easements or right-of-way to implement that. So when I was talking about Pinnacle Peak, I was talking about Pinnacle Peak in the context of our frontage that we do improve, both sides of, up to our entryway. And then we did exactly what staff and we discussed as far as observing the balance of it going east to New River as a tract and not landscaping it, but making it clear that it's possible in the future, east of our entryway could turn into roadway if and when the cities of Peoria and Glendale decide to do so. And then going west, the dry crossing that we talked about. And then I'm really at a loss as to say what we can do to help the city, the school, and others down proximate to the school. Maybe it's temporary paving for some parking or something, I don't know. All I can tell you is that Jim Shelley, who's here, wants to be a part of that solution and not be a part of that problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Ames.
Yes, I got a couple of questions, but one refers to the traffic again. You had mentioned level of service currently and level of service after development. I think you're talking about development beyond this Riverwalk development, right? But my real question is, what is the level of service now? What is the level of service after? And are you talking about peak time?
Vice Mayor Ames, the traffic study did levels of service at several key intersections, and I think they did an AM and, they looked at AM and PM peak times.
Right.
And so they looked at if, the opening year, so if, you know, what would be the level of service today, and then what would be the level of service five years down after build-out. And so when looking at the levels of service they identified today and comparing that with the project tomorrow, there is no identified change in level of service than what is today.
What is the level?
Well, it depends on the intersection, so.
Yeah, well, give me the different levels.
Okay. Let's look at 83rd Avenue and Pinnacle Peak Road. The AM peak level of service today was a C. PM peak level of service of a B. And so.
Would be B, did you say?
B, correct.
Which is a.
That's right.
Very good level, yeah.
It is a good level. And then future year, it would have the same level of service after development of this project. this project.
So then I'm wondering, what is the concern? Is the school, there's no place for people, when they pick up their children, to really park? Is that because they're, they don't have a parking lot there, or other parking area off, off of Pinnacle Peak? Isn't that, isn't the school have to develop something?
Vice Mayor Ames, I think what Councilmember Edwards is pointing to is the Great Hearts Development, the school, Charter School at the southwest corner of Eighty-third and Pinnacle Peak. So that's a site that's not real big, and the, the parking perhaps could be seen by some as inadequate. So what that might mean is that there's off-site impacts, meaning cars might have to park on some of the side streets there.
Yeah, I, I think our schools, mostly throughout the city, have a problem when it's time to pick up the children from, when the parents pick up the children. I notice schools in my district, there are a lot of cars on, on all streets that are around those schools. Is there no off-parking off, off of Pinnacle Peak there? Is that the concern?
Well, Pinnacle, Pinnacle Peak, at Eighty-third and Pinnacle Peak, I believe it's two lanes in each direction, and generally in improved condition. There's some sidewalk segments that are built, but it noticeably changes when you get to Seventy-ninth Avenue, and then it necks down into, into a smaller pavement area. So really what it is, I would say, one lane in each direction, east of Seventy-ninth Avenue.
And I, I heard the developer saying they would work with us to make that better, and I think you've identified some ways to make that better. Kind of, you know, you have, if it's one lane, you still have some roadway to the side where cars can park and pick up their children, even if they go a, a block down from the school, as they do at many other schools. And then if it's two-lane, is there a plan to make this two-lane? I would think maybe, certainly if we opened the, the bridge to the other side, it would definitely have to be two-lane, right?
Right, I mean, if you open the bridge, yeah, you're going to get, you're going to get westbound traffic too, from areas east. The, the development plan, given with the, with the traffic impact analysis, recommendations, and the stipulations, don't identify any off-site changes. However, we'd be willing to work with the applicant to, to identify some changes along Pinnacle Peak to try to help the situation.
I just heard them say they would cooperate with the city in terms of getting some things done, and...
Right.
Apparently including financially, too.
We'd be willing to do that.
Okay. My other question is in terms of the general amendment, and you said south of Pinnacle Peak, it's really a, a change from the, from the general plan.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
The general plan really said eighteen thousand was the biggest, or was the recommended lowest size, right, I think?
Typically, for the, for the estate category, generally eighteen thousand square foot above.
So we have some that are ten and eight here.
Right, and they are requesting a change, right?
Yeah, they're requesting a change, and that, I heard it said, that doesn't mean that other areas change as well in terms of the general plan, is that right? They don't? To the west here, and...
Vice, Vice Mayor Ames, this, this request would just apply to this, to the lower forty acres of this development.
But I think other developers, when they come along, are going to request the same, and...
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank, thank you. I'm thinking about this, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlet.
Thanks, I just had a question about the trail. So you've got a gated community, but there's a trail system that goes along the New River portion of it. Is that accessible to the general public? Is that dedicated to the city?
Yes, it's a part of the city's regional trail system.
Okay.
So it's, it's designed per the city's criteria for easement width and trail surface, with landscaping on both sides of the trail.
Okay, so as this heads farther south, then it would go through the development to the south, and then it already exists up through Fletcher Heights, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So that missing part right there is really critical. And then we just, and, and really, there's nothing north of that for the, our trail system, right?
That's right, Carla, that's correct.
So we're waiting for private development to build that?
Yes.
Good, okay. What do you consider the value of that? How much does it cost to build a trail system like this through this? Might I ask that?
You can ask, I need to ask.
She already did.
The honest answer is, I don't know. We know it's a thirty-foot-wide easement, we know it's a ten-foot-wide concrete trail that's going to be, what?
The length?
Five-thousand lineal feet. By the time it goes up and over... Twenty-eight, twenty-eight-hundred lineal feet, I'm sorry.
Twenty-eight-hundred?
Twenty-eight-hundred lineal feet, approximately. It'll be significant.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leone.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm, if I can talk on this one at this time, or wait till R-120. I want to ask Chris some questions on this.
Go ahead.
Okay. I know you'll stop me if I'm in the wrong area. I remember this, was this back in two thousand four, two thousand five, when we voted on this? And at that time, it was, oh, one-thirty-five lots, right?
Councilmember Leone, I believe the history is correct, and two thousand four was the last rezone effort, and I believe that a portion of the request was, was modified from R-135 to R-118, and there was a subsequent referendum, and that referendum defeated the council action. And that was in two thousand four.
So, oh, one-thirty-fives and one-eighteens, right?
Correct.
Okay, and the planners don't, and the planners only okayed it at that time, right?
Correct.
And you came to the council, and that's the council to okay it, and we did, and we gave a seven votes on that. Now you come, now you want to rezon it, and then you're going to come back with it, and ask us to vote on this here. And now you got eighteen, you got what, about six R-135s? How many R-135s you got?
R-135, Councilmember Leone, there are six lots that are, are R-135, that are outside of the zoning case, but would be developed by them. There'd be seventeen lots that are, that are developed at R-118 or half-acre lots, and then the balance of those lots, let's see, what does the math work out, to be a hundred and five lots, would be between ten-thousand square feet and eight-thousand square feet.
So why are you changing it?
Well, there's a proposal, there's a proposal to change it, and so we're, you know, taking an analysis of that proposal. You know, a lot of things have changed in the area. One thing that, one case that you might recall went to referendum at one time, was the, the commercial core at Happy Valley and Lake Pleasant Parkway. And that went to referendum, the referendum was defeated, but nonetheless, I think it's a recognition that, that, you know, development is a, is organic, and things change in an area. The area is growing and developing around it, and when we look at a general plan case, general, you know, it's, it's generalized land use, it doesn't follow specific parcel boundaries. We look at the edges, and we try to provide the, the best types of transition, and, and a note that we're trying to promote a sustainable urban form. So we're looking at it based on today's conditions, and what you, what we saw in two thousand four were based on the conditions of that time.
I supported the first time, but I can't support the second time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, please? Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is nineteen R general plan amendment, land use map, Riverwalk, Pinnacle Peak Road and Seventy-seventh Avenue. Could I have a motion? It's moved by Ms. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Carlet. Please vote, clerk will record the vote. It is one approval, the, these, those against are Rivero, Ames, and Leone. Thank you very much. Next is twenty R, rezoning Riverwalk, Pinnacle Peak Road, Seventy-fifth to Seventy-seventh Avenues. Could I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Patana. Please vote, clerk will record the vote. It too is one approval, four to three, with Leone, Ames, and Rivero voting no. Is, is Guy Kulp still in the audience? Sir, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed your request to speak on the consent agenda. We don't usually get requests to speak if you would like to come up and speak to that issue.
I'm going to speak on twenty-one R.
Oh. Well, someone, no, Guy Kulp is here as a six C. Oh, you missed that, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next one is twenty-one R, public hearing, rezoning Sierra Ridge Estates, one oh-seventh Avenue and Pinnacle Peak Road.
And Chris will cover this one as well.
Mayor and council, we have one item before us, item twenty-one R. This is a proposed rezone from existing designation to a single-family PAD. The applicant is D.R. Home, excuse me, D.R. Horton Homes, rather, LLC. They're proposing a rezone seventeen-and-a-half acres from Suburban Ranch to a residential PAD, and this is to facilitate the single-family residential development of twenty-four lots. Couple of related cases, earlier on the consent agenda, there was a approval of a annexation, annexation of thirty-two acres. The area that you see highlighted in yellow represents the area that was annexed. It's nine property owners, four of the property owners are D.R. Horton, and then we took action on the initial zoning as were required to under state law, and that applied Peoria, Suburban Ranch, forty-three zoning for the annexed area. So what we're doing tonight is considering the rezone of a seventeen-and-a-half acre portion of that thirty-two acre annexation area. Again, the site is located at the northeast corner of one-hundred-seventh Avenue and Pinnacle Peak Road, seventeen-and-a-half gross acres. Some of the site attributes or the context, again, there's a, there's an SRP overhead powerline corridor, you can kind of see it just west of the project, and it runs in a northeasterly direction. Some of the adjacent uses in the area to the north and east, those areas are currently within, unincorporated, Maricopa County, and zoned rural forty-three, and there are indeed one-acre lots generally developed in that area. When you look to the south, south across Pinnacle Peak Road, the Community of Grace Church is existing. The property just to the west of that is vacant, but it's hard-zoned for C-two intermediate commercial. Some of the areas to the south, Alta Vista Estates, and the Ironwood Development. And then making our way west across one-hundred-seventh Avenue is hard to see on the graphic, but it's the C-Mex, it's called the Hooton Quarry Mine, but it's located to the west of this, of this site here. Pinnacle Peak is a minor arterial on our general plan. It currently does not extend all the way through from one-hundred-seventh to Lake Pleasant Parkway. At some point in the future, either through a capital improvement project or through development, it would extend some point to Lake Pleasant Parkway. One-hundred-seventh Avenue is classified as a arterial on our general plan, and it does provide access all the way up to Tierra del Rio neighborhood, and south down to the Sun The general plan land use designation is located on the, on the left part of the screen. It's currently designated zero-to-two units per acre, or state residential, and like the last case, that is generally lots above eighteen-thousand square feet. The, so when looking at some of the land uses, the Maricopa County Island, also zero-to-two units per acre. Areas to the south that are non-residential, the church, and also the vacant commercially-zoned property, zero-to-two units per acre. And then some more of the suburban, I would say suburban character of those developments to the south, two-to-five units per acre. Looking at the zoning, again, I've pointed out some of the zoning in the area, to the south, hard C-two, the church actually zoned R-118, single-family, eighteen-thousand square This is the conceptual development plan. The plan proposes twenty-four detached single-family lots on seventeen-and-a-half acres. They are proposing a PAD, and, and a PAD is basically a type of zoning district where you can tailor the standards to promote compatibility in an area. So the PAD standards are, are similar to the city's R-118 zoning district, eighteen meaning eighteen-thousand square foot minimum lot size. This results in a gross density for the project of one-point-three units per acre. Again, as I mentioned, the designation of the general plan is zero-to-two units per acre. That makes the, the proposed gross density compliant with the general plan. Some of the plan items includes open space, about three-and-a-half acres of open space, some of it which you see along the west. Also, some of that open space is expressed through a landscaped meeting entry at one-hundred-and-fifth Lane, which provides access into the site. Some of the Pinnacle Peak Road improvements that would be required for the site, they would be required to do the half-street improvements along that, which again includes curb gutter, sidewalk, landscaping, and street lights. And then because it does not extend through, they would do a turnaround at the eastern edge of that along the frontage of Pinnacle Peak Road. They would also require to do Camino de Oro improvements. Camino de Oro currently is a, is a dirt road, it's an access easement that provides access to other lots due east. They would require, be required to provide improvements to that. They would also be working with some of the adjoining property owners to improve their portion, or at least pave their portion of their access easement along the frontage of that project. So what would result would be a twenty-four-foot pavement surface, pavement driving surface for that, for that stretch of Camino de Oro. And then, as you can note too, the lots front on Camino de Oro, and that was basically a change that was done later in the project, and that was to try to, try to provide lots, fronting lots on the other side to, to promote that transition, so that area, so those property owners located to the north aren't looking at a wall, but rather other lots that would front on Camino de Oro. The rezoning process includes a citizen participation process. In this project, there were three citizen participation meetings that were conducted based on the size of the property. We sent notification to all residents, or all property owners, rather, within a six-hundred-foot radius, and all registered HOAs within one mile. The meetings were held at Sunrise Mountain Library, and the turnout was, was very strong at all of the meetings, and, and by that I mean, the turnout was probably north of forty people at each, at each meeting. Some of the citizen concerns that were heard at the meeting were that the lot sizes were too small, and, and I'll tell you, as we, as we look at some of the changes to the plan, the, the plan that was presented early on were eight-thousand-square-foot lots, so that was where you heard a lot of that discussion about lot sizes being too small. That also invited concerns about the density and, and its early non-conformance with the general plan. There were also concerns about the development, the use, rather, of Camino de Oro, and would that introduce trips onto that unimproved road surface, potentially as a, as a way to connect to Lake Pleasant Parkway to the east. There are also concerns about general willis devalue, property values in the area, and what is the impact on the semi-rural lifestyle in the area. So we'll show you some of the changes to the plan as it went through the process. So the, the applicant had a meeting with the neighborhood, and this was prior to the project being submitted to the city. At that time, they showed a plan that was fifty single-family lots. The plan was certainly not in conformance with the general plan, and at that time, prior to submittal, they would have had, they would have been looking at a general plan amendment request. They submitted the project in February of two thousand thirteen. At that time, the, the graphic industry illustrated thirty-four single-family lots, density of two units per acre, they were looking for a minimum lot size of eight-thousand square feet. Again, that plan was not in conformance with the general plan, and so they went back a, for a second, submittal in May of two thousand thirteen, and they modified the plan significantly to be twenty-four single-family lots. The lot sizes were all increased to eighteen-thousand square feet, and again, as I mentioned, that's a, that's a, that's a comparable or acceptable lot size standard for our state residential category. So at that point, we said that the plan was compliant with our general plan designation. Also, nonetheless, although with the third citizen meeting they had, although there was, people were pleased with the change in the density and also the change in the lot size, there were still some lingering concerns with the Camino de Oro about potential access to Camino de Oro. It's still, there were still some strong concerns about that aspect of it. This case did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, most recently December fifth, two thousand thirteen. One citizen spoke in support of the project, and three spoke in opposition. Some of the staff findings are some of the key points that we noted in the report, the gross density of the project of one-point-three units per acre, it does comply with the, the estate residential land use category. We believe the lot size and the character, we believe it's compatible with surrounding properties. We also believe it provides appropriate land use transition. When you look at some of the, the, the elements in the general area, some of the contextual elements, one-hundred-seventh and Pinnacle Peak, that's an arterial corner, also noting that some of the non-residential uses at that corner, and the potential commercial development at the southeast corner, it is hard-zoned commercial right now, and also noted the, the C-Mex Hooton Quarry to the west. So with those elements in mind, we believe eighteen-thousand square foot lots, it's compliant with the general plan. We believe it provides a reasonable transition to larger lots in the area. And so with that, based on the conditions in your staff report, staff is recommending approval of case Z-13001, rezone seventeen-and-a-half acres from Suburban Ranch to a single-family PAD, minimum lot size of eighteen-thousand square feet. With that, I'll take any questions.
Maybe I missed it. What was Planning and Zoning's vote?
I'm sorry. Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Would anyone in the audience who hasn't already sent in a slip care to speak to this item? And it is rezoning Sierra Ridge Estates, 107th Avenue and Pinnacle Peak Road. Seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we'll call upon Zeke Rios. Pardon me? I'm calling upon him right now. Mr. Rios. Yep. Oh. I'm sorry, Mr. Culp, I have you down for six C.
I filled out the wrong number.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Culp, I'm sorry. You're up. All good?
My name is Ezekiel Rios. I live at 23612 North 105th Lane on Camino de Oro. I'm one of the residents that was annexed into the city of Peoria. And I'd just like to point out a couple of safety concerns that myself and some of the other homeowners on Camino de Oro have. We have a lot of traffic that comes down the hill from probably as far as 102 Second Avenue or so. And we have had some close calls with kids playing outside on the driveway, and sometimes even on the street if a ball runs down the street or whatever. The concern that we have would be basically removed by this project if it goes through because it's going to provide an intersection just east of where these two homes are, and people would be basically forced to turn at that intersection, access through the new subdivision onto Pinnacle Peak and to 107th Avenue, which brings up the next concern, the safety concern that we have, which is all this traffic that comes from down the hill currently accesses a driveway that's been made just by people using that access. And people make left turns and right turns out of there, they drive into, through there off of 107th Avenue. Very unsafe situation currently, and there's a lot of traffic that goes through there. They drive right in front of my home. If this project goes through, we'll also resolve that, that safety concern, because they'll provide access through the subdivision onto Pinnacle Peak once again, and ultimately to 107th Avenue, which that intersection currently is under construction for a new signal that should be energized in a matter of weeks. So it'll be a controlled access point, and that's basically our main concern right, you know, currently. So the people that come down the hill will be able to use paved roads that will be there, will be able to use those roads, and it'll accommodate the traffic that we have through there much better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Culp. Finally, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm opposed to this project. It doesn't fit the current lifestyle of the rural area. It seems like anytime anybody can get their hands on ten or fifteen acres, we can throw ten, twenty houses on it in the middle of a natural rural area. It's been developed that way for over, I've been out there over eighteen years, and it's been that way. The gentleman that spoke before me has never paid a penny to the city of Peoria in taxes. I have, over the years. I have personally, out of my pocket, maintained and rented equipment for the dirt road, put A B down that goes into our homes. A big concern of mine is you currently have done a truck route down the river bottom collecting seven plants, all dumping out at Pinnacle Peak and 107th Avenue, putting a little density project in, and these people jumping out where there's going to be over three thousand trucks running a day, doesn't make a lot of sense as far as safety to me. I'm in the construction business. I manage these people and developers every day. This is no way a master plan like Vistancia, Anthem, West Wing. This is somebody getting their hands on a little piece of property and trying to turn a nickel on it, no matter who's involved. They've talked about primary access going out to 107th off of Pinnacle Peak. That's never going to happen. All the people that live in that area now come down the dirt road, they drive way too fast down it in the first place. I don't see any of the construction access. I work with developers, they, all they care about is getting their work done. They don't get the word to their vendors, their subs, or anybody. The road we personally maintain and have for our access now will be turned into a construction easement. They say that's not going to happen. I live in the area, I know it will happen. I see it happen every day. That's one of my big concerns, and I plan on holding the developer accountable for the extra access and the extra dust and everything else that's going to happen there when they say they're not going to use it. And I know it will happen. They're not going to give everybody a map where to go to work on this project, they're not going to tell them how to get there, just get there. They're all going to come driving through our neighborhood, all our dirt roads, and no dust control, no blade, and they're going to turn their back on us. It already happened when we did the retention basin last year. I put over $10,000 worth of A B down, rumble came in, built your retention basin, hauled over 4,000 loads of dirt out of there, and there's no A B left on that road today. I'm not out of pocket right now to do it again. Seventeen acres. That's a master plan. Everything around that is one acre lots. I bought a five acre lot. Putting that in the middle of that, plus with that new truck route, I just oppose it, and it doesn't make any sense, and I think it's unsafe, and I think you'll all be sorry if somebody gets killed there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is 21R, rezoning Sierra Ridge Estates, 107th Avenue and Pinnacle Peak Road. Could I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Patena. Questions or comments?
Ms. Ames came through first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Now, this one does meet the general plan requirement of that eighteen thousand square feet, right?
Yes, Ms. Ames, that's correct.
So why are we doing that here and we didn't do it in the other direction on Pinnacle Peak?
I think in this case, in the other case, you had a number of vacant lots in the general area. It was still a developing area. Here, around the area, you've got some existing one acre lots in the county. So what we see this as is a transitional land use project, particularly at the corner of those two, in the future will be busy roadways. So we see the circumstance and the context a little differently than the other.
See it differently, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carla.
Yes, I would like to address the issue of construction traffic. Can we mitigate it? How will we mitigate it? I see that Pinnacle Peak in this site plan comes to a cul-de-sac at the end. It's a dead end. So is there a possibility of getting from this dead end up to the Pinnacle Peak that goes through to Lake Pleasant Parkway?
Councilmember Carla, are you suggesting that, so it would dead end right now, so the Pinnacle Peak east of this would open up in the future, either through a capital improvement program project or a development case?
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
I'm talking about during construction of this project, what is going to deter people from utilizing Lake Pleasant Parkway, Pinnacle Peak, and then over to 107th, and what is, what are we going to do to enforce that?
Mayor, members of the council, what we can do is work with the developer and our inspectors. We've done it numerous times in the past where we can encourage them to go up 107th Avenue and come across on Pinnacle Peak to access their site. There is public access through the county, there's dirt roads that the county has within their jurisdiction north of Pinnacle Peak Road, but we'll discourage them from using those roadways.
And by discouraged, do you mean enforce? I mean, can we put enforcement out there if need be?
We can encourage them.
We can enforce it? Is that what you mean?
I think we can work it out.
Okay. I would like to find ways to make sure that that doesn't happen. It's not the correct access, and in other places where we ask them to make, use the correct access, we expect them to do so.
That's correct.
And I would expect that that be the case here too, even if we need to put up a Jersey barrier in the meantime. I like Jersey barriers. Okay, thanks, I just want to make sure that we're going to do that.
Sure.
Ms. Ames.
Yeah, aren't they required to meet dust mitigation requirements? Is it because part of it's the county there and part of it is us, and it's harder to enforce that?
No, the county will enforce it. They'll have to pull a dust control permit from the county, and the county enforces the dust control issues, but yes, they'll have to water their stuff.
And we can work with the county too.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is 21R, rezoning Sierra Ridge Estates, 107th Avenue and Pinnacle Peak Road. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. A clerk will record the votes. There are two dissenting and five in favor dissenting is Rivero and Leoni. Next is 22R, Contract Professional Sports Catering LLC, concessionary services for Peoria Sports Complex.
This item will be presented by John Sefton and Calcaterra.
Good evening, mayor and council. This item is, as stated earlier, contract with Professional Sports Catering LLC for the concession services at the Peoria Sports Complex. And Chris Calcaterra, Sports Complex's manager, will make the presentation tonight.
Mayor, members, council, thank you very much for your time tonight to talk about food service at the Peoria Sports Complex. We began the process.
You need to be all closer to your mic.
We began the process, am I on, sorry about that, through materials management with a strict criteria and selection process. Technical difficulty, let me start over. We began the process six months ago with the materials management process, was select criteria for this type of venue, and sporting venues for food services. This process included mandatory site visits, walk-through of the facility, and interview process once firms were selected. We selected three firms, and we interviewed all three with a panel within the city and outside interview as well. Part of that process, we offered best and finals from all three entities, and we ended up starting negotiations about four months ago with what we are recommending tonight, Professional Sports Catering. It would be our new concessionaire. This company was founded in 2006 with a focus on our type of stadiums, mid-sized minor league ballparks throughout the country. They have over fifty years of experience in several of these areas, and they also are looking to expand into the spring training market, where we have year-round facilities as well as a spring training and a major league baseball connection. They currently run and maintain seventeen minor league baseball clients. And tonight, from Professional Sports Catering, in the audience I have Jason Wilson. They dedicated their vice president of operations, who will also act as our Peoria GM, which is, it's a great opportunity for the sports complex to actually grow and maintain a partnership with Professional Sports Catering. This contract would extend through spring training 2028 with an option for renewal of five years. We also received with this contract a capital grant of 1.85 million dollars to use at the city's discretion at the stadium improvements, which will start occurring next year. Part of the contract also includes $650,000 for equipment and replacements for enhancements of concessionary-related equipment. The new contract also allows the sports complex in the city to begin to see a percent, a 2% higher rate of return than our previous twenty-year contractor in food services. And in this contract, we also learned from others across the country and in the valley that we broke out our food service, our food percentages from our alcohol percentages. It's common in the food services area and sporting events that 60% is alcohol, 40% is food. So we felt this was a better route to go forward for the next fifteen years. Catering commissions were also higher than our previous contract by 15%. And what this means, obviously, for the city, the teams, and our partners in Diamond Club is higher revenues in the food service area. Professional Sports Catering offers several different unique opportunities for us. They're eccentric to our type of facility, our type of community. They develop and hold to the true meaning of what Peoria means to them. It's a unique experience, it's streamlined opportunities, they simplify the stand menus, they have opportunities for all sorts of food beverages and combos, and they also bring in unique subcontractors to the minor league systems. And I also need to, you know, one of the beauties of Professional Sports Catering, they run two minor league ballparks. So not only do they understand food service, they understand the baseball operations of our type of like facilities. And those two facilities are the East Lansing Lugnuts and Montgomery Biscuits, which are in the single A and double A facilities for the Tampa Bay and Ray's facilities. So that alone, the knowledge that comes with that, has extensively improved our opportunities to work moving forward in opportunities in concessions. 2015, because we do have stadium improvements coming up, we elected to hold off on improvement, major improvements for this 14 season in order to hold back, and so we actually improve the stadium next year. So we would energize the 1.85 million dollars into our stadium improvement project as part of the overall theme and stand menu improvements as part of the stadium improvements. Tonight, I would like to recommend that we approve the Professional Sports Catering contract for food services at the Peoria Sports Complex, and future authorization of 1.85 million dollars to provide for the capital expenditures for the capital grant for stadium improvements from Professional Sports Catering. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Rivero.
I'm going to start by, excuse me. Who are the other three firms?
The three selected firms to interview were Professional Sports, Ovations, and Airmark.
And why did this, in your view, why did this firm stand out?
Through the process of best and final from all three companies' firms, this firm had the highest percentage rate of return on investment, rate of return on food services, and their actual product line, their ability to, their niche service, if you will, they're in smaller ballparks, they understand our line of business better than the other firms, I believe.
Have we worked with this company before?
We have not. They are new to the spring training market and new to Arizona.
Who are their references?
References were multiple, well, all of their minor league clients, they definitely put out, we made several phone calls across the country, but they also have several business partners in Chicago where they, where their main headquarters are at. But they're, we've basically researched the company from a standpoint of their capital, their finances, and their ability to produce. One of our stipulations was that they maintain a vice president of operations in Arizona, so we won't be forgotten.
Any local references?
Apology.
Any local references?
No local references in the sports service area.
Okay. Why a 15-year contract?
Most contracts and concessions for the capital expenditure side are in the length of 10 to 12 years. The 15-year option, we did a 10 with a five-year extension, gave us the most capital dollars to put into stadium improvements project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ames.
Yes, why don't we clarify this? We're getting 1.85 million from them, right?
Correct.
And they're also doing the improvements?
We are managing improvements through the engineering department as part of our stadium improvements project, starting this, after the spring training.
Okay.
The 600,000, the enhancements, they also have an investment pot that they take care of maintaining their equipment in the concessions area.
Excuse me. Yes? So what are we spending here that?
There's no expenditure on our side.
Well, that's what I thought, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So this is, and then we get someone to run the concession there?
This company.
And we get a, we get 2% of that?
It's 2% higher than our previous contract.
2% higher, okay.
Correct, yeah, so we.
What is the percentage then?
They're split into food and alcohol, but we start at, they're in tiered sections based on the amount of revenue from food services, but we start at 42% on food and 45% on alcohol.
Okay. So we're kind of bringing in a partner, and the partner's spending quite a bit of money?
They do.
Build a new, more attractive, efficient, better concession operation at our sports complex, right?
Correct. Well, one opportunity that Professional Sports brought us is they actually are catering service providers for the two teams, so they also provide food services for the baseball clubs, which in that. So they also provide food services for the baseball clubs, which in essence gives us a campus. Now we have a concessionaire, food service provider that takes care of the entire campus.
Okay. That's what I thought when I read this, but it wasn't clear with 1.85. But, okay. But we're still appropriations, the money that we get, and we're going to put it in a reserve, right?
This will be actually expended in 2014 as we start the stadium improvements projects. We're looking for the authorization to provide that money.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Petta.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, this is a 15-year contract. How often will you assess their performance? And do we have an exit clause in case they're not performing?
We definitely... We assess their performance every year. We have a closeout meeting with the caterer, the concessionaire, and the teams in spring training closeout. We have several triggers that we can utilize throughout the contract that allow us to survey, to actually hold benchmark the facility, the caterer, as well as against the other facilities in town. We do have out clauses. However, obviously, with the commitment of upfront dollars that Professional Sports is putting into the arrangement, they are protected in some sorts from unamortized money as they go into the contract.
Mr. Ains.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Mr. Petta asked one of my questions, but can you go back, Chris? One or two more slides at the beginning of your presentation. Right there. So Professional Catering was founded in 2006, yet they have 50 years of experience in professional baseball?
Correct. That's the personnel. There's... The individuals within the company have over 50 years of experience in professional baseball.
Just want to get some clarification.
Absolutely.
Ms. Carlet.
No, no. I just needed some clarification about the sliding scale. When I'm looking at the numbers from 2012... Well, first of all, I wanted to say, good job dividing out the alcohol. That was really smart. But the sliding scale, I just wonder if you're just talking about concession... concession sales to get the most... The highest rate, the 45%, you're looking at 600,000. And I'm not seeing just 600,000 in 2012. It looks to me like this is including alcohol in '12, right?
Correct.
Right? So these numbers are much less than that?
Correct. Our previous contract cumulative both food and alcohol together.
Okay. And so in this case in 2012, if that was to carry on with the current sliding scale, we would not be making the most amount of commission that we could get?
Absolutely. You're correct.
Okay. So why is the bar kind of hard to reach for us? It's our bar. We should have lowered it.
It's actually... We do 1.5 for concessions revenue on average in a season. And it's basically by per cap. So as you go through the season, you... When food and alcohol are rated out 60/40, by pulling out food and having alcohol separated, you... Alcohol being 60, food being 40, we're obviously receiving a higher percentage based on that. So one of the other benefits with doing a tiered platform is when we have, for instance, soccer coming up, we are going from spring training into soccer as the same... as a cumulative rate of return on concession percentages. So if we end the spring training season at $1 million on food services or alcohol, we will start at $1 million, $1 for soccer. So we will not go back to zero.
Oh, great. Okay. Good. That's good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This is 22R Contract Professional Sports Catering LLC concessionary services for Peoria Sports Complex. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ains. Seconded by Ms. Carlet. Please vote. The clerk will record your vote. None of us. Thank you very much. Next is call the public on not the items. I have no forms. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. Just three brief presentations under my report. The first one is an online reporting system that is being presented by John Imig, our information technology director, and Roy Minter, our police chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The chief and I are here today to take just a moment to introduce you to a new capability that we are opening up to our citizens and visitors of the city of Peoria. This is called the Desk Officer Online Reporting System from the Cop Logic Corporation. They're out of California. This is another implementation of a module that we're adding on to our computer-aided dispatch records management system that we brought online in the police department about a year ago. And I'll step briefly through the mechanics of the system and then I'll hand it over to the chief to talk about some of the details on what this is going to allow the police department to accomplish for us. Citizen reporting is online now. That's phase one. It's come online. As a matter of fact, I've already got some statistics that they provided to us from some preliminary use we've had on this. Phase two is a future phase in which we will engage with certain businesses in the city to have their risk management, their loss prevention personnel be able to report crimes from those particular organizations to the city. And again, that's a future phase that we're working on at this time. We're getting ready to do a pilot of that. Essentially, what this allows the citizen to do is go to peoriaaz.gov/reportcrimes and create an online report for non-emergency sort of incidents. What this will do is this will put it into a repository in which a police officer can then review the data, make sure there's no missing information, nothing else that needs to be gained from the citizen in order for it to proceed forward, and then approve the case report. And then it will go into the records management system to be handled actively by the appropriate personnel at the police department. What the citizen does, or visitor simply does, is navigate to the city's website, click on Crime Reporting Online. They will be taken to a fillable page in which they will select the appropriate incident type, whether it be a criminal damage, fraudulent use of a credit card, graffiti. You'll see that outlined in red on your screen. After that, they will be taken to another screen in which they will fill out all of the information, where it happened, who it was, who the home number is, email addresses. There are certain pieces of information that are mandatory in order for the online report to get filed. Then they will be able to put in a narrative of what happened. They'll be able to say in their own language exactly what happened during the incident, where it happened, any details that might be pertinent for the police department to know. Then after that, be taken to confirm the information that they have entered to make sure it's all correct so that they can correct it if need be. After which, it will be able to be viewed and printed so that they have a preliminary history of creating the incident online before it goes over to the police department. And you'll see the incident's been reported and is pending approval. That's the review process that the officer will take them through at that point. So what I'm going to do is hand it over to the chief at this point and let him speak to some of the advantages of the police department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Looking at this new system, we see tremendous benefits, potential benefits for this system. One of them is the time that it will save for dispatching officers to certain calls and also the convenience that it will provide to our citizens in being able to log on and use a system that's very simple, very easy to use. Looking at the next slide, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the other agencies currently in the state who are also using this report... reporting system. We will become the fifth agency in this area to use this type of reporting system for municipalities. If you look at some of the common type of reports that some of our officers are dispatched to or that were contacted to actually complete reports on, the area is not highlighted on this screen, but some of the things that we often respond to and are somewhat time-consuming as far as taking reports are such things as theft from vehicle, if somebody were to take maybe a license plate off a vehicle, or criminal damage or vandalism to a vehicle. Somebody may throw a rock or something in a neighborhood. You come out, there's really no evidence for us to recover, but you need to have a police report done for insurance purposes. Or if there's an incident where there is a residential burglary that occurs, and once the officer has taken a report, left the scene, you may realize that there are two or three other items that you forgot to advise the officer of. You could then log on and do a supplemental report as opposed to having to call the police department and have an officer come back out and take a supplemental report. And then also, as John mentioned, there's phase two where the loss prevention departments for several of the companies in the city may be able to log on and they'll be able to do their loss prevention reports. We see a tremendous benefit for this. It's just been on... up and running a couple of weeks. We just sent the media release out this afternoon. But so far, even though we have not advertised it, we've had several people log on to the website looking to do online reports. Right now, we're up to 50 online reports that have already been completed, and we haven't even officially rolled it out yet. The press release didn't go out until 4:00 PM this afternoon. So we see a tremendous benefit to this as far as cost savings and also staffing hours for our personnel. And John and I will address any questions you have.
Yeah, that's incredible. Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you for doing this. I think this is a great asset for our citizens in another way of making sure that we can get after crime. My question is, how will you prioritize these events? And how do we ensure that each one of them will get taken care of?
Well, they're prioritized by the way they come into the dispatch center. The majority of these types of reports are reports that are not in-progress type reports. They're reports where the incident has already occurred and somebody is just requesting or needs a police report done for these types of incidents. So those are the types of reports that we're looking at. We're not looking at doing reports at this particular point in time where there's an identified suspect at the scene or something where there is a critical need for a police officer to respond to the scene.
Mr. Ains.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, Mr. Ains.
No, I'm sorry.
You're next.
I kind of had the same question, but there's no follow-up here? Someone reports identity theft and we don't look into the crime?
Yes, there is. That would be a situation where maybe there's a credit card that's dropped. If in the event that... Because all of these reports are reviewed by our records section. If it appears that there's additional follow-up that needs to be done regarding a particular investigation, that information will be forwarded to the Criminal Investigation Section for follow-up investigation.
Okay. And you already have someone that takes, I think, phone calls and that kind of a thing, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And you do follow-up on those? And so this will kind of fall in that category?
This will fall in that category and hopefully ease the burden on some of those folks who are taking desk reports over the phone.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Ains.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, once again, chief, you guys are ahead of the curve. Congratulations. But I did have one question for you. On the... One of the slides, you had the confirmation that the report had been filed. Is that going to be something that the citizen can then take to their insurance company to file a claim? Or do they have to wait for confirmation from your department that that's valid?
No. Councilmember Edwards, you're absolutely correct. That would be something that they could print out at that particular point in time, and they would actually have a verified offense report number that they can use to take directly to their insurance agent. Or they would also be able to email that information to their insurance agent if they need to.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carlet.
Thanks. The slide... The first slide, I think it was, that showed the chain of events, how things are reported, goes up to the cloud. Can you go back to that one?
Certainly, Councilmember Carlet. We'll work our way back here.
Yeah, at least towards the beginning. And the reason that my question comes up is because Target is mentioned right before this slide. So with us storing things out on the cloud like that, what is the security and what are the chances that any of this personal information is going to be hacked?
Well, whenever we go into this sort of situation, whether it be something that's hosted here locally or something into the cloud, we assure that our security staff fully vets the system, make sure that it is stored in a secure manner, and that we don't take any chances. That's absolutely the last thing we want to do. As far as a lot of this information is concerned, it is controlled by statute as to what needs to be accessible, what can be accessible, and in what form it needs to be stored. So once we're convinced, we have to make sure the police department is on board with it as well, and then we're able to move forward at that point.
Okay. And I assume that you're putting names and addresses, but maybe not social security numbers and things like that, right?
I wouldn't be able to address the specific information that is collected on there, but we can certainly find out for you and follow up with you on that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And Chief Minter will stay up for the second item as well.
Mayor and council, while other presenters are making their way down to the podium here. Last month, during my council update on community-oriented policing programs, I provided you with some brief information on a new private social media platform that neighbors can use to communicate with each other. Tonight, I am proud to present to you Justin Fenwick with Nextdoor.com, and she's here to give you a brief presentation on Nextdoor.com, how people in our community are using it and how it is really growing in the community of Peoria. Justin?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So Nextdoor is a free, private social network. Oh, excuse me. Nextdoor is a free, private social network for your neighborhood. It's a place for your residents to communicate online with each other. They're using it today to coordinate a neighborhood picnic, to sell a child's tricycle to their neighbors, to share some crime and safety information, some information about a burglary that may have happened in the neighborhood. And starting soon, they'll be able to actually use Nextdoor to connect with the Peoria Police Department. Nextdoor is a young company. We've been in business for only three years, and our service has been available for two years. And in that time, we have grown dramatically. We have now 30,000 neighborhoods across the country using us, and we have partnerships with over 150 cities now. Phoenix, your neighboring cities, Phoenix, Chandler, and soon Mesa will be announcing that they're launching Nextdoor, too. In Peoria today, 77 neighborhoods have started Nextdoor sites. You have over 2,000 residents who have signed on to the service. It grew by 10% last month alone. In the last 30 days, your residents invited 1,600 more Peoria residents to join the network. And they're sending, on average, 20 messages a day over Nextdoor. This is a screenshot of Nextdoor, of the Nextdoor Neighborhood Site. One thing to mention about Nextdoor, it is both a website, an app, an iPhone app, an Android app, and you can do all your communication via email if you never want to come to the website. People call us the Facebook for Neighborhoods. It's actually a great description, but we think there are some very significant differences between us and some of the other social networking sites out there. The first thing to note about Nextdoor is it is what we call private and secure. Each neighborhood site is password-protected. Only people who live in the neighborhood can see what is shared, and every neighbor has to verify that they live in the neighborhood. And I think one of the qualities that is most important, every neighborhood... Every neighbor has to use their real first and last name. So when your residents post out on this site, they have to represent their real selves and they know that they are posting to their real neighbors. Finally, we don't share any of our members' information with... personal information with advertisers. But I do want to tell you that Nextdoor is a privately-held company, and we have... The site is free to residents. It's free to city staff. But we will be supporting the site through local business advertising. There is no local business advertising on the site today, but we do expect it to be coming probably within the year. So why are police adopting Nextdoor? Well, safety is a critical concern in all neighborhoods. And in fact, when we look across all of our postings on Nextdoor, about 20% of all the postings on Nextdoor are what we call crime and safety-related. These can range from neighbors saying, "I want to set up a neighborhood watch group," to, "Hey, there was a burglary in our neighborhood, and I want to share that information with you." We are now seeing some very exciting things happening between police and residents partnering to actually solve crimes by using Nextdoor. We had a case in the city of San Jose where a resident actually shared with the police some home video... a resident actually shared with the police some home video, personal security video, and the police were able to use that to apprehend the criminal. There are a number of other reasons why police are adopting Nextdoor. First, they understand the importance of bringing back a sense of community to the neighborhood. They know that stronger, safer, stronger neighborhoods, better-connected neighbors lead to safer neighborhoods. They're also using Nextdoor to facilitate neighborhood watch and virtual business watch. And they're also using Nextdoor to kind of broaden their reach to their residents. A lot of police departments are now understanding that the best way to reach their residents is actually to embrace social networking sites and go to where the residents already Nextdoor provides a single platform for your police department to post all the neighborhoods that are using Nextdoor. They can just with one click send a message out to all 77 neighborhoods or they can send a message out to a group of neighborhoods. And final reason why the police are adopting Nextdoor is that your residents really love getting crime and safety information through, from the police on Nextdoor. So, I'm gonna stop there and open it up to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, your comments from the council? Go ahead.
Chief, with all of the police officers attending HOA meetings and really getting involved in the communities, are they talking about this at that place, just to get the word out?
Absolutely. Councilmember Carla, just to give you an idea of how we're really doing a, an outstanding job of promoting it, I'd ask Commander Ken Gentry to come and kinda talk to you about some of the things that some of his officers are doing to help promote Nextdoor.com out of the neighborhoods.
Great, thanks.
Yes, Councilmember Carla, Mayor and Council. We speak at almost every single meeting. We show the flyers on these. Right now, obviously, the police department doesn't have our site launched on it that yet, but what we're finding, like at the HOA Academy we just had, where we talked to the HOA members, this really helped the HOAs connect and talk with the different members and they really embraced it immensely. It's a free product that they can actually get out and share information. So, every chance that we get, whether it's a HOA meeting, whether it's a block watch meeting, we're finding that this is a better format. A lot of people don't have time to come in together in the living rooms anymore. Everybody's living in a virtual world. And so, we're really just moving with the newer generations at this point.
Other questions, your comments? Mr. Ames?
Yeah, to, to clarify, this is, this doesn't go to the police department, right? It stays within the neighborhoods?
That's...
And that's the idea of it, right?
There's a couple of different ways. So, the neighborhoods have a private neighborhood site, but the police are given a special tools where they can post information into those neighborhoods and they can receive replies back from the neighbors. Now, they can't actually see the neighbor-to-neighbor posts because the site is private, but the police do have the opportunity to post into the neighborhood and receive messages back. We haven't actually turned on the Peoria Police Department page yet, so you haven't seen any of that, if any of you are on the Nextdoor site in Peoria, but it will be coming soon.
But you don't get involved in the communications between the neighbors?
No.
You can report things to them and that's a good way to do that, right?
Correct, Vice Mayor Ames.
And we're gonna be setting that up soon?
Yes, we're looking at within the next two weeks, Vice Mayor Ames.
Good, thank you.
Any questions, comments? Thank you very much.
The, excuse me, the third presentation is about the grand opening of the two baseball clubhouses last week. I think the council, a couple of councilmembers I know were there and you all received the press release. They're up and open and Andy Granger and Ed Strifler will lead the presentation.
Thank you, Carl, Mayor, members of the council. As Carl stated, this is a report to really highlight a project that's taken several years to complete and we're proud to announce that the clubhouse is coming to completion. Both teams are very happy with the end product. And before I turn it over to Ed and Kathy Sponsel, our project manager on this project, I'd just like to recognize, as Ed's gonna recognize, a lot of the staff members from the city who were part of this project, but our, our key group of, of staff that manage this project are right here is Kathy Sponsel, Ed Strifler, and then in the audience is Chris Calcaterra. These three really spent the bulk of their time over the last couple of years of this project and really should receive the bulk of the credit for what we've accomplished. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ed as soon as he gets back here to go through his PowerPoint with Kathy.
One, one of the things I can mention while we're trying to pull up the PowerPoint is we, we did have a media tour last week before the players, the pitchers, the catchers reported for duty and both the Padres and the Mariners executively came down to tour their clubhouse and they're extremely satisfied with, with the end product that we've, that we've come to, to complete. Good?
Sorry, Mayor and Council, there were a few Planning Department cases in the way. Just to infuse a little enthusiasm, we did it. And the emphasis is on the "we" and I'll speak to that tonight. As Andy mentioned, the Mariners and the Padres are moved in and spring training 2014 has begun. The weekend edition of the Peoria Republic calls our new facilities All-Star. So, if you haven't seen the article, it was in the Republic this past weekend with an excellent amount of pictures that go with it. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to the All-Star Peoria team who helped to make it happen. We couldn't have pulled this off without fielding our best players, starting over three years ago with our planning and procurement squad, followed by our design and permitting squad. We moved in and leveraged the talents of our construction and inspection squad and all along the way, in culminating in occupancy, are our operations and maintenance squad. Just a shout-out to all of those and if you keep count tonight, there's over 80 people listed here that had a role in making this happen, from the city attorney's office, who were involved from the first negotiations to the last and most recent contracts with the Mariners related to solar, the city manager's office for roles in negotiations, contract execution, financial oversight, community services for being involved in everything from day one till now. Special acknowledgement of my peer, Chris Calcaterra, for his leadership, vision and contributions all along the way. In the economic development department, a shout-out to all those who reviewed plans, expedited permits and conducted countless inspections day after day after day to pull this off in time. In the engineering staff, beyond those that you see here tonight, another of our coworkers, John Hammond, who was the third project manager on the project, and our real property staff who worked with our utility companies to expedite easements. On the finance and budget side, for working with the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority, for assembling our financing and for expediting solicitations and agreements. FIRE for their plan review and inspections and leading the way to our safe and legal occupancy of these two buildings. A shout-out to the IT department for their management of three different, very complicated computer networks, 1,000 miles of cabling and being our liaison to Cox and CenturyLink. Planning and development for their early site development guidance. Public Works Utilities for their water and air quality compliance review and inspections, their input and support on the city's new energy management platform. And please allow me to extend an apology to the solid waste staff who are not represented here, but nonetheless are no more, are no less deserving of credit for all of their recycling of our solid waste during construction and diversion of, diversion from our landfills. Last, we couldn't have been successful without the vision, the approvals and the trust of you, the Mayor and the City Council. So, just a few end-of-project highlights. If you were keeping count, it was nine months and 23 days from the first day of demolition to the team trucks arriving and our legal occupancy of the building. And let me tell you, there were only a few hours difference between the trucks arriving and the legal occupancy of the building, so it was a nail-biter to the very end. At this point in time, the graphic says it all. We are at the end of our budget pot. We are projecting to be slightly under-budget on the Seattle Mariners clubhouse and projected to be approximately at-budget on the San Diego Padres clubhouse. We're on track toward our sustainability objective of, objectives of achieving lead silver and/or potentially lead gold. We have an even stronger Mariners and Padres partnership and I would truly like to say friendships as a result of this project. We have, and this is the rewarding part for staff, some very excited baseball players, trainers, coaches and staff who returned to something very different than what they left and Miss Sponsel will highlight that here in just a second. And last, a shout-out to our APS partners in acknowledging and helping us to process our applications for over $200,000 in energy efficiency, energy efficiency rebates that are forthcoming in the next couple of months. So, at this point, I'm gonna introduce Kathy Sponsel. She's an architect in the Engineering Department without whom we couldn't have completed this project. She'll narrate a pictorial journey over the last nine months.
Mayor and Council, let's take a flashback. Nine months ago, just nine short months, we had two nearly identical buildings. The Mariners and the Padres gave the building a send-off on a portion that was to be demolished. They left a note to the demo crew, "Go easy, Honor. 20 years of good times." They signed the walls showing their appreciation. You may remember, the buildings were tired and ready for renovation. We had one pool in the therapy room. We had utilitarian major league locker rooms. This is the Mariners' weight room with really low ceilings. Today, we have a contemporary aesthetic inside and out. We have updated finishes that are low-maintenance. We have stairways that are open to the second floor. You can see the stadium in the background waiting for the next, to be next in line for this new design aesthetic. The Padres chose palm trees to reference back to their home stadium. We have efficient Energy Star equipment in our laundry rooms. Five pools now bringing the therapy rooms up to par with our home stadiums. Here's the major league locker rooms, which are more spacious. Custom lockers, custom carpet. Here's the Padres' major league locker room with high ceilings giving it a grandiose feel. Both teams have moved in. The minor league players are soon to arrive. Their locker rooms can hold 200 players and boast new spacious lockers. This is the Mariners' weight room with its high ceilings and garage doors that let the workout space extend to the exterior. The Padres have expanded and updated their weight room. Here's Andy Granger with Councilman Patana touring the rooftop patio of the Padres. We have a multipurpose dining space that can be divided into two spaces. New commercial kitchens. We are on target for lead certified buildings utilizing a high-performance, energy-efficient air conditioning system in combination with a high-performance building envelope. The fans have arrived and are waiting autographs.
And to conclude, for our next act coming in spring training 2015, will be improvements to the stadium proper. We are actively engaged in the design meetings and moving with great regard to the lack of available schedule to complete these improvements. So, it should be a, a pretty amazing transformation when we're all done. With that, we'll be happy to answer. Any questions?
Thanks very much, Mr. Patana.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to tour those facilities with the Media Day and they're really both quite extraordinary and are certainly gonna take us into the next 20 years of spring training. With all the people that you listed here that played a role in this, I think you, I think what you pulled off in nine months and 23 days was a phenomenal accomplishment. So, congratulations to all of you and everyone who participated in getting this done. Great job.
Absolutely.
And Ed looks a whole lot more relaxed than he has.
Mr. Ames?
Thank you.
Yes, that picture you just put up, that's, that's another year and that'll include those new concessions, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. This is...
Looks great.
...master plan, grand image of the transformations that are beginning design at the main stadium.
This is what everyone will see who attends, right?
Yes.
Okay. To some, we'll see the rooms of the teams. Okay, thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
That's the only presentations I have, but just one item, if we have that in the last slide, not enough for this group, but just if we get technical difficulties, don't stop my last slide here. The council notes that I and several of the other management staff are very involved in the leadership of the Arizona City County Management Association. And two weeks ago, we had our semi-annual meeting up in Sedona and we had several presentations at that conference. One was by John Sefton about the youth master plan and Jacob and Thomas were both able to attend the conference and they were a huge hit amongst the other city managers in terms of just being participants in all of the sessions. Their poise, their professionalism impressed all the managers and I wanted to pass some along to you, Council. And, and the accolades to the city of Peoria for our youth master plan were, were everywhere. So, that's it.
Thanks very much. It's time for reports from the City Council. We'll start with Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, all I'd like to say is thank you for the opportunity for attending the ACMA conference. We had a great time sharing with other municipalities kinda the youth master plan and Jacob and my role up here with you guys. So, it was a great opportunity and thank you.
You're more than welcome. Mr. Leone?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had a couple of things that I, I went to. I was invited to the, let us say, book sale over at Sunrise Mountain. It's the friends of the Peoria Public Library. They had a good crowd there. I'm sure everybody got a, an invitation to go and they had coffee and, and as usual, sweets. The president of the Peoria Library, friends of the Peoria Library made a speech and it was great. They had the Barbershop Quartet. The problem is that only three of them showed up and they were waiting for the fourth one to come, but it was getting late, so I left. I think Kathy had left too, 'cause we were the only two there. But it was, it was a good, it was a good meeting and I guess if the fourth one came, I guess it was a pretty good show that they put on and maybe next time, we could be able to see them. The other thing is, we went to the dinner on the diamond and it was casino night. Of course, it's not real money, it's make-believe money. And I'm not too keen about make-believe money, but it was a great, it was a great event. If you haven't never gone, I'd advise you to go. There's some good speakers and they had a guy there, retired Boston, he played for the Boston Red Sox. Of course, I never heard of him, but he says he did. But it was a great speech and had a lot of people there and a lot of good speakers there. And they did a great job on that. So, if you haven't never gone to it, I think it's a good idea to go to it. The other thing we had on February 8th, they had a Pine District Community Meeting and as usual, the Ramada Inn, we had the police and the fire and co-compliance was there and they all did a great job. The police lieutenant, Stair, does a great job on that when he's giving his speech and he's just more or less telling people that we're looking for ears and eyes to help the police department to catch all these criminals or all these burglars. So, I think it was a great meeting and everybody that was there enjoyed it. The fire department did a great job also. Also, I went to the fire department awards and it was great. All these firefighters got awards and there was a lot of them, like the firefighters charities. Everybody got out, there's about maybe 15, 20, 20 awards gave out. And it was great. I wanna congratulate those people that got the awards. They do a great job for the firefighters and the city of Peoria. The last thing I wanna say that, I went to the ballpark for the opening on the clubhouse and I took the tour with the whole, it was about, I guess, 20 of us there. There was two different, there was 10 and 10, but it was great. The clubhouse was beautiful. They did a great job. I wanna congratulate Andy Granger and all, all the people that worked on it. You know, I don't know who they all were, but they all... You know, I don't know who they all were, but they all worked on it. They did just a great job. If you haven't seen it and gone to tour, I'd advise you to do that, because it's just tremendous. And, uh, I did, we went to the locker rooms, and I have to tell you, when I walked through the locker rooms, I checked in all the names out, and I came across a name, Dominic Leoni. He might be a relative, I don't know, he's 22 years old. But anyway, but anyway, yeah, it was great. If you have never gone here, like I said, take a tour, and I'm sure, I'm sure you'll like it. And by the way, the Diamond Club is looking for volunteers, so if you want to volunteer, just go down to the Vol, uh, Diamond Club office and, uh, put your name in. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I was at a couple of those too. The Friends of the Library event was really amazing. I mean, it, it's a fundraiser that, it's a book sale that they put on, uh, but in addition to that, they also had a lot of the volunteers there, and, you know, between Colleen and, and Ruby, I'm not sure that we could ask for anything more in the city of Peoria. They do all kinds of programs for kids and just, they attract so many people to their events that they almost can't fit them in, in the space that we have, and they're doing them at our libraries as well as out in Vestancia. I mean, they're taking their show on the road. It's, it's just amazing what they're accomplishing, just because they want to, that's all. You know, they're not employees, they're not paid, they just want to help. And, um, speaking of people who just want to help, I also attended the, the 2014 Board and Commission Recognition Event, and these are all of the citizens who volunteer their time to help the city of Peoria, the council, the staff, everybody make the crucial decisions that have to be made on a regular basis around the city. And so it was very nice to have them all in one room and to be able to say thank you formally for all of the work that they do for the whole year, so I hope that that was a, a really good dinner for them, because they, they deserve it. And, um, just one more thing, the, the Firefighters Award Dinner was really amazing. I'm humbling to hear the stories that they tell. Uh, the awards that they received are, they're, they're so deserving, and sometimes, you know, we just really take for granted our public safety officials. They put their life on the line every single day for us, and we just go about our daily lives and don't have to worry about a thing because they are handling it all. So to hear all of those stories and to see them get recognized for it was really a great opportunity for me. So thanks to all of them, and thanks to all of these people who volunteer for all of us and for the city of Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Nothing, Mayor. Jacob?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we'll start off this evening with some recognitions as an outstanding student here in Peoria. Uh, congratulations to Peoria High School student, Comrade Mc, excuse me, McMahonaman, who was recently recognized as Youth of the Year by the Jerry and Helen, excuse me, Wissats, W, W, ah, Wissatsky, Peoria branch of the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Phoenix. I want to point out, this is the highest honor a club can bestow upon one of its members. Uh, I'd also like to recognize the teams from Zuni Hills Elementary and Peoria Traditional School that competed in the Honeywell Fiesta Bowl Aerospace Challenge recently. Five teams of students in fifth through eighth grade have been working diligently the last few months to design a moon colony that will sustain the lives of up to 50 astronauts while they mine a special energy source called helium-3. Uh, they wrote a report, created a presentation, and designed a scale model of recycled materials to present to real-life engineers. Uh, Team Alpha Omega won the Kids' Choice Awards for the base that best utilized recycled materials, and Team Among the Stars brought home the judges' award for the, excuse me, judges' award for the base the judges would like to live on. Great work. Other than that, I, I get so many recognition, it's really hard to choose between all of them, so I just kind of go in a random order, no, no importance over, over anybody else. Uh, but I'd also like to point out that, um, like Carl mentioned and, uh, Thomas mentioned as well, I went to the ACMA. It was a wonderful experience. Um, I just want to make, make it known to the mayor and council that the idea was well-received by other managers. A lot of them, you could almost see, you know, why didn't we think of that? You know, a little bit of jealousy going on, so I wouldn't be surprised if, uh, Tammy gets some calls, uh, wondering how other cities can, uh, participate in such a program. I also just want to highlight, uh, the Youth Advisory Board. We like to help out each year with the Adaptive Dance. It's a sweetheart dance, it's on, uh, the 14th, it's on Valentine's Day, so, um, several Youth Advisory Board members attended and gave up their Valentine's evening to volunteer, but I just want to point out that they didn't really give up anything, because when you go to these dances, uh, the people that attend have some of the biggest hearts and they're the nicest people you ever get to meet, so while they didn't get to spend their Valentine's Day with whoever, they got to spend it with a, a real loving group of people. I just wanted to extend a huge thank you for all the service of people who, uh, volunteer and work at the community center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Ms. Patina?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the first responsibilities of any city is to protect its citizens, and I think our citizens are in really good shape right now. I also attended the firefighters', uh, award ceremony, and some of the bios we gave, as Councilmember Carlott said, were very humbling, and, um, they're pulling people out of burning cars and taking people who are confined in wheelchairs out of, out of apartments that are burning, saving children from pools. Um, they were just some amazing stories, and, and the same thing with our police. I mean, when they get up in the morning, they never really know what they're going to encounter, and, uh, they put their lives on the line every day, and I just want them all to know how much, uh, we appreciate it, and just like Councilmember Edwards said, we, I believe that we're definitely ahead of the curve on what we do in that regard. Uh, and congratulations to all of the firefighters who received their awards. I also attended the Arizona Broadway Theater. Uh, the dinner and performance was a way of thanking our volunteers, and as the mayor says, they give us time, they save us money, they give us their expertise, and for that we buy them a meal, and, uh, I just hope everybody had a good time. It was a fun event. I also attended the Dinner on the Diamond. It's a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce and the Peoria Diamond Club. It was a really nice event, good speeches, and a, and a nice kickoff to, uh, Spring Training. And lastly, I attended a fundraiser event for Heart of the City. Uh, it's an organization that serves disadvantaged kids. Uh, it was at the Renaissance Hotel and attended by about 500 people. Uh, what they do is they go into difficult neighborhoods, they help kids through sports and various other programs. It was a great event, uh, for a really great organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray.
Yes, I, I attended a number of event, events too, some of which have been mentioned. I won't go into those, but, uh, indeed, our, uh, public safety personnel, uh, do an excellent job, and, uh, I know I feel safe, and I hope, uh, most of you in the public out there in Peoria do as well. Thank you. God bless.
I have nothing to add. We are adjourned as the city council. We are now coming into, into order of Vestancia Community Facilities District Board Meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairperson Barrett?
Here.
Vice Chair Ames?
Here.
Board Member Rivera?
Here.
Board Member Patina?
Here.
Board Member Edwards?
Here.
Board Member Carlott?
Here.
Board Member Leoni?
Here.
Board Liaison Jolene?
Here.
And Board Liaison Pryor?
Here.
There is just one item on the agenda, that's the consent agenda. Could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Carlott, seconded by Mr. Ames. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. Are you unanimous? Thank you. Call of the public, I have no request to speak. We're adjourned.